Now, when does Suzanne start?
I thought you were talking about me.
It's like, I'm here.
Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, August 25th, 2016. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll begin the meeting with approval of warrants number nine, V-17, and number 10, P-17.
So moved, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, we all had an opportunity to go into other schools right before this meeting. So, thanks Mike for coming. If we could just talk about-
Sure, some of the things we've done.
Yeah, you guys have been busy.
Yep, at the high school, one of the biggest things we did, which was, you know, it took a lot of time, was we hung up all the TVs that the PTA donated.
Yeah.
So, almost every room has a, you know, a 65-inch TV now, which is great.
Yeah.
We've spent a lot of time cleaning up the grounds. We've fertilized and seeded the top two fields. I don't know, you guys haven't been up there maybe for practices or anything, but the grass up there is really growing great, so.
Oh, good.
Looks great up there. And we've also fertilized and seeded the Pearly field to keep that, you know, good too, and that looks good. The Pearly school, we spent a lot of time painting the hallways and just really cleaning. Last summer was such a different summer, such a rush of moving and whatever. So, the buildings didn't really get a deep cleaning, but we really gave everything a good deep cleaning this year. At the Pembroke school, we moved a door from the teacher's room to the hallway. And, I mean, the guys did an outstanding job, you wouldn't even know.
They'd never know.
Yeah, they did that, so, to create a bathroom for parents and stuff like that, so.
We didn't have a public bathroom. We didn't have a, you know, if somebody came in and wanted to use the bathroom, they'd have to go into one of the kids' bathrooms.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if you noticed, but there's no sign, but the sign is actually coming Monday, so.
So, the staff holds.
The staff have bathrooms in their teachers' rooms, but there was not a bathroom for the public.
Right.
It's, I have a, I mean, we did a lot of great things and we painted a lot at the high school as well, hallways, door frames and everything, so. The floors over there are really shining and looking good, just like Carol likes them.
They are, they are spick and span.
They'll always be famous for their floors being designed, I guess.
Oh, I don't know, I think Peter beat you on that though. Peter saw something today that me and Pamela, like, what are you looking at? And he went over and it was something very-
Yeah, at the high school.
Minor, but he was like, can you fix this?
We're all entitled to our opinions, but it was minor in my-
So, we've changed out some old rugs at the high school that were in the offices from, you know, the remodel in 96, and we put in new carpet and that kind of thing. We did all the guidance offices this summer, so. And we put an epoxy floor down in the trainers' room at the high school. Just, it was just a plain cement floor, so it's been an epoxy floor, just to clean it up and make it look more, you know, like a training, training room.
Speaking of that, is there ever going to be any update equipment for the training room?
You want to donate some?
For the gym?
You mean the weight room?
You mean, you mean the weight room.
I believe everything we've gotten has basically been a donation.
I haven't been in yet. Well, a couple of years ago, maybe last year. Yeah, it, they, like, the treadmill and everything, yeah.
So, maybe we ought to just let the community know that if anyone wants to donate.
Hey, here we go.
We'll come pick it up.
Great, you know. Yeah, exercise equipment, it could be welcome.
That's right, yep. I don't know if you guys have any specific questions, but.
I loved the stenciling in the high school. There's a lot of, like, eye work in the, in the hallways and everything, like, going into the bandroom.
Oh, it's gorgeous.
They lined, like, the entranceway. It's really warm and welcoming and the kids, it just goes to show how creative and how much talent we have here, because it's all been done by the kids, which is great. I love that.
I mean, overall, the school I thought was beautiful. It was, you know, very, very clean and comfortable looking and the paint was awesome and the desks were in order and everything.
Well, your staff has done a great job. Just a great job. All schools are phenomenal.
I told Mike I thought that they looked the best they've ever looked.
I mean, putting up those TVs, that's, that's really important. I think the kids, when they get back to school, are going to be excited by those TVs. It's going to draw their attention. The teachers are going to have so much material to be able to, you know, teach with that way. And we only need four more TVs, right?
Yep.
And how do we choose, well, Peter's right, how do we choose who are those teachers that don't get-
Who those four are.
Those unlucky four are.
We can ask Peter when he can.
Oh, Wes can tell me.
We have, the rooms that don't have TVs have projectors, so they're all right for now.
So, is that why they didn't get the TV, Wes, because they already had the projector?
They really want them. They said they would rather have their projectors for a while longer, but they will-
But, so, does that mean there's one unlucky teacher that doesn't have anything?
No, there's one, one teacher that has, because she had a smart board instead of just a projector.
A smart board, okay. She wants a smart board.
She had a smart board, but she didn't get them.
Okay.
She's an actual old film projector that she-
Okay, yeah, I was very impressed. You know, the only thing I saw was in room 1270, the exhaust fan that, you know, you all mentioned some concern about the noise level that maybe I'll bring to the school building committee at the next meeting, that it's loud when the teachers-
The sounding, when the sound protocols came out, he said that it was unacceptable.
It's within acceptable, but it's still louder than people-
I'd still like to bring it up again and just ask if there's a way to quiet it down.
Yeah, it's an acceptable white noise, yeah.
It's the white noise.
Just see if there's a way to quiet it down, so we'll do that.
And how did Pembroke look?
It looked great.
Beautiful.
Did you meet at 6:30?
We did.
Is that enough time to go to? Yeah, oh, that's good.
They beat us.
It's what?
They beat us.
I think there was more to see at the high school. There was more different things done.
We went in the library. The library is just gorgeous, looking so different.
It's pristine, it's just beautiful, so you know, you're just-
Well, for me, I, for the first time, I saw the sixth grade gift of the-
Oh, I haven't seen that in the library?
Yes, it's, it just really follows the theme of the building.
What is it?
So, the kids brought in tin cans and who's the person?
Margaret.
The, uh, Karen had found an artist. She refers to herself as Tin Can Sally. And so, children brought in tin cans that have designs, and then she cut birds out of them. And then, there's a flock of, it's called the flock of birds, and she put and placed them along the walls in the library leaning out towards the windows, so it looks like they're, you know, flying. And then there's a beautiful inscription on a plaque.
We'll take a picture of her, she says.
Oh, that's nice, yeah.
It's really beautiful.
Check it out.
Is there an article about that in the Georgetown Record?
Yes, I think there was.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was an article.
That's nice, great. Well, that's good.
And that nice lady who donated the landscaping at the end. The shrubs are all planted and-
I'll have to go by them. I was, I was attempting to go down on Saturday and then I saw all the work and I'm like, oh.
So, we are, we're still, we haven't given up on the lights. We're still working on the lights. To backlight it. We haven't, we haven't given up on that.
Okay, so, are we doing that through-
We're hoping that we can work through the Georgetown.
Electric.
Electric, that's what we're hoping.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent work.
Everything really, this year, I think it was really the best.
It's so different from last year.
It was different from last year because-
Last year was tough. And even the grounds at Pembroke, you know, as, as we were talking, Mike has gotten some new equipment. He's gotten a slope mower. So, I think when you go out, even though like Suzanne and I were talking about, you know, we kind of like it even more manicured than it is, but it's, parents are going to be so much happier.
I was going to ask, because there was so much discord.
Well, what did you say?
It was awful before. It's much, much better.
It's better. It still looks undone, but it's better. Okay.
It looks natural.
Yeah, the-
Plan, yeah. But it, I think it looks better. Yeah, good.
Well, that's good. I wish the kids a great day on Tuesday. Um, is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda tonight? Okay, so, we have Peter Durkey here. He's going to talk to us about some work being done on Elm Street.
Pete.
Thanks for coming, Peter.
Hello.
There's a lot of work in this time that's being done. I've gone down streets that I'm like, when do they do this? He's a busy man.
At night.
Thank you for coming. So, tell us about Elm Street.
Currently, the National Grid is replacing the gas line on Elm Street so we can do the project of, you know, new sidewalks, new street, new drainage next year for Elm Street. So, this is going to save the town, you know, over $100,000 for them replacing the gas line. We would have had to pay them to move the gas line around our structures or to lower the gas line where we're cutting the road down. So, it was worth it to let them come in and do this when they're doing it, because it's going to save the town money when we go next year to replace the road.
That's a lot of money.
Yep.
Can you tell them why it didn't start at the beginning of the summer? Because that's a frequently asked question.
Well, one reason they were doing another road in Georgetown, that we were going to be reclaiming and regrading and paving, Jewett Street. So, they did 500 feet over there. That was probably in July, but before that, they have, you know, they're working in other towns. This isn't the only town they work in. So, they, you know, they have other jobs to do. They, they like to schedule it, you know, but every town has schools, so.
Right.
So, we just have to take it when they're, when they're here. They've, I think they started about a week ago, and already from East Main Street, they're almost at the entrance to the school. By tomorrow, they should be at the entrance to the school. And they work Saturdays. They work 7:00 to 5:30, 7:00 to 5:00, every day. I went by Saturday, they were still working at 5 o'clock, so they're pushing to get this done as quick as they can. So, you know, I think the, the worst part is over, being by the school. And they're going to be here Monday and they'll, they'll work Monday. And then Tuesday is the first day of school. They're going to hire an extra police officer for that day. You'll have the resource officer out at East Main Street, and there'll be two offices for the, the detail, plus there'll be one at the end of the school, letting people know. We had a meeting earlier today and what we decided to do is anybody can get to the school either direction. When they leave the school, they're going to take a right out of the school.
So, adding towards East Main.
So, everybody will go East Main, but if, if you want to come in, you know, from your house, that's not a problem. But when you leave, you know-
When I leave, I can't go back the same way I came.
So, what we're going to do is give everybody Dunkin' Donuts cards so they can stop and get a coffee and then go home.
I'll come a million times. I'll just keep coming.
And who's paying for that?
The school.
Of course. But this is the first stage, correct?
Well, this is, this is just the gas company.
This is just the gas company.
This is, we're not doing anything with sidewalks, road. This is just the gas company to do their thing. Because we don't want to start our project in the fall, because we haven't even gone out the bid yet. And we've waited to go out the bid because of the gas company.
So, then what's going on 133, where they're replacing the sidewalks there?
That's, that's totally different, and that won't have any effect with the school. Currently, we are, you know, we hired a company to come in and replace sidewalks from, say, Elm Street to Pillsbury Lane. It was dangerous there. Anybody could drive up onto the sidewalk and hit anybody if they wanted to.
It's really dangerous now, they're running.
I wouldn't run that way, you know, but-
She told me that last week. As I'm dodging.
The details didn't tell you the first day not to run this way, so.
So, that's completely separate.
That's separate. And they're going to finish up tomorrow, and it's going to be compacted. You'll be able to walk on it. You'll be able to ride your bike on it, but it won't be paved until the week of the 12th, September 12th. And that will happen, I'm sure, because, you know, we'll hire, you know, we already hire the pavers, we already have them under contract, and they won't come in until, you know, after school starts. And it's only a four or five hour job to pave that. So, they'll be in-
So, the kids will still be able to walk that?
They'll still be able to walk it, and then they'll walk that way in the morning, and then, you know, the day that we do it, and they'll be able to walk home that afternoon on it.
Magic will just be paved.
Yep.
With the Dunkin' Donuts card.
Ask, how long will people not be able to take a left out of Pembroke, leaving?
You know, we'll see how it goes the first week, and then, you know, as we get further away from the school, it'll be easier to, to have cars stop, because it's only one lane of roadway.
Right.
And they do about two, two to 250 feet a day. So, they open up a trench. They start in the morning, they open up a trench, and it's, they open it up for like 200, 250 feet. Then they go back and they start digging the trench. And when they put the material in the road, that's when it starts to get a little bit narrower. Emergency vehicles will always be able to get to the school. People will always be able to get to the school, so it's, it won't be a problem that way.
Just arrange, arrange the time.
We're just trying, if they work all next week, that will be, you know, they should be, you know, a lot further away from the school, that you could have people take a left. You know, we'll have to, I'll talk to the police and they'll, we'll decide that, okay, it's all right that, for people to take a left, because we can queue up 15 cars to sit there while the traffic's coming to get to school.
In September and mid-October.
It could be as early as the second week of school. We just have to look at, you know, how far we can queue up.
We said, we'll say on the blog that we'll let parents know as soon as we-
Yeah, have, you know, a little set of expectations.
Everybody that lives on Elm Street, they'll always be able to get to their house. As far as I know, the, the company's been great. They knock on the door and let people know that we're going to be in front of your house, that you need to move your car out now, and then you'll be able to get in the afternoon.
Today, it's closed down to all traffic, but-
But you can always get to the, you can always get to the school.
Get to the school, yep.
You know, we don't want to, you know, tell people that, you know, they come down, it's like, I can't get to the school. So, you can always get to the school.
But you can't cut through that. We were talking about that.
I mean, we, we closed it down today more to speed things up for them, because they don't have to worry about cars. They can, you know, make it quicker for them. But when school opens up, you'll always be able to get to the school, so.
And, and the workers are well aware of the hours of drop-off and pickup, and they're going to make some accommodations at that time?
They know, I, they know the times that, you know, I have them written down here, I gave them to them, and they know that nothing goes in that other lane, you know, not even a vehicle. Like, there's no reason to be in that lane during that, that 45 minutes of time.
Okay.
They know that.
Good. Did you do a connected message?
Not yet. So, because we wanted to meet today and we wanted to have this meeting, so we're doing this. I, today, before I left my office, I did write a blog about it. Just wanted to make sure the information was, so. And the police put something up today on the police Facebook page, and then we will, Margaret's doing something and I'm, and I will do a connected as well.
For some reason, looking at your, the orange notes, I was thinking you were going to do the connected message telling people to watch tonight.
I, no, I did, I did a blog. I did a blog about that, yeah.
Okay, and then there was an article in the paper.
There was an article in the paper, too.
So, I just hope it goes well, because I know this morning, traffic, not even this morning, probably at like 11, 10:30, it was really bad on, like, by Dunkin' Donuts.
It was backed up both ends.
Well, it's because we're doing the workout on East Main Street. We have East Main Street down to one lane.
Yeah.
So, I mean, people are driven, they go the same way every day.
Yeah.
You try to tell them that you can go this way here and-
They don't want to do it.
So, they just, they just don't know. I know when we were doing the Central Street job, somebody was driving through Central Street and said, and they were coming from Byfield, and they said, this is the way, you know, I go to work, and it's like, well, you can, you know, just go around this, this, you know, detour, and it will take you right back out. She turned around and went back to Byfield and got on 95.
Not going to work today.
But that's, you know, and it was clearly marked which way to go with the detours, so.
Did you want to say a minute about the change in the intersection at Pearly?
Oh, yeah, I just noticed that.
Just in case the people know that.
The island gone.
They can't go like, they can't go like this anymore.
Oh, right, I noticed that.
I mean, you know, we, we didn't just change that intersection. We changed three intersections this, this summer when we repaved roads.
That's so dangerous.
So, Pond Street, when, when cars were coming out of Pond Street, all they had to do was just look back like this, and they're not looking at anybody crossing the street, at the car that stopped in front of them, because the car is coming. And, you know, there's been many accidents at that intersection. And it would have been excellent if we could have moved the pole, but that, that would probably be the hottest pole to move in town. It would, it would be tough to move that pole. So, we made, you know, there's more room on the left side. I drove one of the fire trucks out of there. I made it with the fire truck, and that's bigger than a car. They're going to be painting crosswalks tonight in the downtown area, and they'll be painting that crosswalk there. They're going to paint a double yellow line there, and they're going to shift the line over just a little bit, so the person making that right turn has a little bit more room to go right, but the car coming in will have plenty of room to come in. So, another intersection that we changed was Jewett and North. You could come off North Street onto Jewett Street. If you were doing 45 on North Street, you didn't have to slow down to get onto Jewett Street. Now, you have to slow down to get on the Jewett Street. It was, you know, just a, you know, you could just turn right onto it, plus it was a bank curve. There's no more bank curve. So, now you slow down onto Jewett Street. Another place that we, we changed the intersection was Searl Street. You know, I've been out there. It's not that I just come up with these things, like, I'm just going to do this to mess with people. But, you know, one of the first intersections we changed was at the intersection of Warren and Tenney. And I was out there looking, measuring to do the road over, and I saw somebody jogging, and a person was looking toward Riley and just went around the corner and almost hit him. And it's, you know, you're just going to do something to slow people down. They just, everybody is busy doing something but driving, so.
Texting.
Like a light at the end of 133.
And you're doing that at the bottom of Elm Street as well, right? Is that part of this?
Elm Street, when that intersection gets, yes, and that will be safer.
Oh, what, what are you talking about?
So, when you come from your house-
Yeah.
And you drive onto Elm Street, you can just, you know, be doing 40, 45, 50, and just take a right. You won't be able to after the intersection. You'll have to slow down and take a right turn, so.
Suggestion.
But the other one was Searl Street. I saw an accident on Searl Street. The person went into the left lane, probably two telephone pole lengths before Searl Street, thinking that I can just shoot right up there, and a car came and head-on collision. So, it's, it's just try to make it safer and to slow people down before they get onto another road, you know, so.
Yeah, there's definitely a lot of work going on.
Yep.
Busy little town.
Yep.
And Pete really, I mean, the timing isn't great, but Pete really has tried to work with National Grid. He's, he's tried to work with all of us, you know.
Have you heard any complaints from the parents or concerns or?
I haven't yet, but I guess in the Facebook, there, there's quite a bit of, of activity in the, in the parents' Facebook. Isn't there about this?
There are a couple of questions that I saw.
Nothing crazy.
I think the Town Hall has gotten more questions about it.
It's hard, because it would almost be like a second job.
Yeah.
Really. I mean, I, I love the fact when people do go in and answer, as long as it's an accurate answer, but, um-
There's been nothing, uh-
Nothing like derogatory or just questions.
Is it going to be done by, you know, like, before school starts?
Yeah.
I assume once school does start, that there will be a few.
Yeah, they're always surprised.
Well, I think that's, I think that's why we're trying to be in front of it, right? So that at least people know what to expect.
I think the chief put out the, the map today, which I think helps, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're all trying to work together, see what we can make it, manage it, be as efficient as we can be.
Yeah, people's going to have to leave a little early.
Yeah, well, that's kind of the message, right? You, you just expect some delays, so. Like Margaret said, she's not going to have to take attendance for the first week till 9 o'clock, you know, assuming that there may be some, some glitches.
That's a good idea.
And Peter, Peter was talking to the bus company and promised me he would call Cindy and make sure that everything is good for her from her perspective and-
I mean, anytime we ever do roadwork, you know, one of the first people we call is the bus company. And, you know, we always tell them, and, and most of the bus drivers are the same bus drivers they've had for years. And they know that if we have roadwork, that as soon as the police officer sees them, he stops the traffic the other way and they have the right of way.
Yeah, that's what they talked about today, even the bus, if the bus has to turn to the, when they come out.
Whatever way the bus has to go, the bus is going.
They'll, they'll make sure that they, they, the detail officer will make sure it's clear for them.
Oh, good. Yeah.
And parents that, you know, obviously we're working the bus things out in the first week anyway, so there could be just some delays anyway. So, people just have to understand that, you know, they get to give and take about five to 10 minutes, I think. Some of the bus routes were changed. They were, they were. Was that via the new, system, new program? Yes, 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 and based on the ridership, right, who, who registered. Bus 5 is a little long and there's some concern about that. That isn't the bus we're using for the double, the double run. Bus 2 is the one we're using for the double run. So, it, they figure it, it really is about a 45-minute run. So, we're, obviously Barry said we have to run them the first week. If there are adjustments that we need to make, we certainly will make them. But we have had far less bus issues so far this year, so let's hope that continues. Obviously, you know, we'll see when, when school opens the first week, but by this time in the past, there, there've been a lot of, of issues that were hard to resolve.
They're color-coded this year, correct? They're color-coded this year.
They're color-coded this year, and we are trying that convenience run, so we'll see how that goes.
When did they post them, the, um?
In the paper?
The paper.
I thought they, early August was when I thought they posted them.
I didn't see it. Was it in there? I don't get the paper.
I didn't, I didn't see. I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask Barbie. I, I don't, I didn't look, so I must say that, but I, I will ask about it.
But, I mean, everything, the whole process was started sooner.
Yes, it did.
So, it seemed like everything was underway sooner.
But we'll have the bus ones posted on the website, on the school website, yes, so you don't have to get the streets on record.
I believe the streets are up there now, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
With the times and the stops.
That's good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Pete.
Have a good night.
Thank you, too.
Okay, the next, we have Chief Cudmore and we have Officer Olshewski.
Yes.
Is that right? Very nice to have both of you here.
Good evening.
Well, good evening.
I was so excited when the superintendent told us that we would be having a dedicated SRO to the schools, and we appreciate all your hard work, because we know how important it has been to you for the last couple of years that we haven't had that, and so I appreciate that.
Seven years. Seven years.
I appreciate it.
Good evening, and, and I know that the announcement for this SRO position came in segments. What happened was the Georgetown Record had printed an article concerning the Finance and Advisory's recommendation concerning funding for the position. And then there was some issues concerning the contact with the Board of Selectmen, and then a second article came out. So, it, it was a rocky start politically for the position, but in the end, everybody knew exactly what our mission was, is to put an officer in the schools, but also, including this new officer's position, handling some other issues that I've had some major deficits in traffic and controlling some of our public parks and things like that. So, it's a dedicated SRO position during the school year. We'll have a very similar program that we had back in 2004, when we initiated the program with the federal grant. And then I am going to use the officer for many other initiatives. So, he's going to be a busy officer. As all my officers are. And I was actually talking to some of the administrators today, and our, our program with regard to our district, we, we've been always available as a resource, and we handle our problems and we try to be as proactive as we can. What happens, though, is everybody has a little bit of delegated responsibility, and we're going to bring that in so that we now can have one contact person and have some follow-up on some of the initiatives that are critical for our district today, especially given today's times. That's the plan. I've, I've shared a list with the superintendent. We've agreed to a memorandum of understanding. I know people were concerned about policy. There's no specific policy about an SRO program. I think that the memorandum of understanding is operational in nature between the superintendent and I, and then if she deals with her board, I deal with my board with regard to funding. The position has no cost to the district, but it's a cost to our community, you know. I tried to stress that to everyone, that, you know, a dollar out of my pocket as a taxpayer is a dollar to either the schools or the police or the highway or the fire. It's the same dollar. So, I think that the relevancy of what budget we're taking that out of, in the end, we're taking out of the Georgetown budget. So, you know, there's, there's been some real cooperation with the FinCom, and I, I thank them publicly for that, as well as the Board of Selectmen. I have to come up with some additional funding with some schedule changes. I've had to work with my unions. They've been amenable to that. So, there has been some behind-the-scenes activity to get this, where we are today, to make it happen. But in the end, it's the right thing for our district. We're, we're an independent school district. We're a very independent community, and although we foster the, one of the best relationships I can probably attest to with the school district and a police department, I think the super would say the same thing. We can always be better at what we do, and this will make us better. On both sides.
Definitely.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I just remember back in 2009, the parents that came together for Georgetown Cares. You know, we talked about different priorities and things that were important to them in the community to make it safer for our youth. And the number one concern was they wanted a, a school resource officer in the schools. That was really very important to them, and it still is, I'm sure.
Yeah, and I think that, that intersection at the, at the entrance to Elm Street and East Main Street, I've created a traffic control point for this officer to be there every day. And, and if he is not here, it will be part of a patrol directive, because, you know, I assured the Board of Selectmen with the amount of complaints that they're getting relative to traffic and safety in that area, that we can combine those resources and, and keep a traffic control point there. You mentioned the traffic light. We've done extensive studies with private companies with traffic counts and the like with Merrimack Valley,[1737.34] And, uh, we just do not meet the criteria right now to get that traffic light. There are, there are peaks of times when the categories, there's eight categories that you've, you have to meet to get that traffic control light. We meet three of them at times. We meet five of them at times, but it's not all of the time. You can envision many, many more intersections when we drive to Danvers and you drive through cities where there's no traffic light and you, and you know it's insanity. It's because there's certain criteria to get that traffic light, uh, so that you can get DOT to sign off it, and we have to pay for it. And you're talking two or three hundred thousand dollars to get that project and initiative. Um, it was going to try and be part of that Elm Street rehabilitation. It did not, uh, it, it just did not make it. Elm Street, as you, as you heard the Highway Surveyor speak of, we've had a lot of meetings. We have contingency plans. Uh, sometimes, what do they say about the best plans, right? We're not really gonna know what this is gonna look like until Tuesday morning. And then it's going to be a learning curve for the traffic control point on East Main Street with Officer Alchevsky. Uh, he has to learn the traffic pattern and he has to learn the school traffic. We did a couple of tests at the end of the year last year. We actually filmed them. We were filming the, the traffic control point, and we were doing counts ourselves to see where we would fall, uh, for enforcement. Because, you know, there's a difference between safety and convenience, and it falls somewhere in between. Um, it's easy to mask it on public safety, but sometimes it's just a convenience. You don't wanna wait in line, right? So, we have to take both of those, those, uh, uh, situations and determine how we can provide the best traffic control there. It's gonna be a challenge, and, you know, he'll do, he'll, he'll do okay.
But you have Jimmy, uh, Sergeant Roden, the first couple of days working with.
Yes, and, and I think that by, i- i- you, if you take two or three days with repetitive traffic, which is seventy percent of our traffic in any, uh, in, in any area, eventually you can, you, you can train the traffic. I mean, Merrimack Valley has, has, uh, I've attended many, many sessions on that. Um, signs are great, but people get sign-blind. Too many signs, people do nothing. Not enough signs, people do nothing. So, you, you have to find that, those calming devices that will allow you to create safe traffic flow and a change of the intersections. And the safety for the officer too.
So will you be there in the afternoon too?
Yes.
So the afternoon, okay.
And what we've done is we've taken the peak times when the traffic is the worst. I mean, when you look at the opening and closing of school, uh, when you, you know, we, we looked at between two hundred and fifty and three hundred cars, and you're looking at a time period between like eight-ten and eight-forty. It's literally like twenty-five to thirty minutes where it's chaos, right? And if we can organize the chaos, uh, you know, w- we, we also had this at the high school. There are people that will drive to the school and they think the, and, and Peter made a very valid point, and we, we actually changed ten percent of the traffic pattern at the high school. People are taking a right out of the Pembroke driveway to go to East Main Street. And if they just took a left and then took a right on Central Street, they'd, they'd go to the same place. So if we could spread the pain out a little bit, so that not everybody's trying to go on the same road at the same time. Are you okay?
I think I'm looking for, is this about the Lisa Lane house?
No.
That's okay. That was a very excited-looking face. So, uh, that's our plan, and I think that the change of the intersections, not everybody's happy with some of the changes that we've made with the intersections. But, um, the country-style Y intersections just do not work. Uh, they create hazards. They're dangerous. The intersection at the, at Central Elm, East and Nelson, at the end of Elm Street, that's a five-way, that's a six-way intersection.
It is.
You know, that's, that, that there is not even controllable, you know, uh, because you go down East Street, you have to go down Central, uh, two ways off of Elm Street, and you go two ways off of, uh, Nelson. So, uh, that's going to be a T-intersection. Brook Street will be a T-intersection. Uh, Brook Street is a one-way street right now. There's a bit of controversy concerning whether Brook Street will be two-way. Well, we've recommended that, and we've only recommended it because of traffic flow and pattern.
Right.
Part of our problem is we're taking all of our streets and we're dumping all of our traffic onto four roadways, and then everybody has to go through the center of the community, never mind the other traffic that has to come through from our tributary road. So, we need to change some of our traffic patterns to ease some of this pain.
That would alleviate some of it.
You just have to.
Back up all the way.
You just have to spread it out, exactly. And, 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 and there is, um, a, a need for patience, especially next week. Uh, the first day could go very smoothly or be a disaster. We're prepared for both. People have to be, uh, very aware that when you have officers directing traffic, it's great to have them there. But if you remember the old Pembroke School configuration, if there's nowhere to direct anybody, then the traffic control point is useless. If the roads are full, the driveway's full, where do you direct them to? There, there's nowhere to go. So, so you need, you need entry and egress. You need to have that so that you can create a traffic pattern and direct traffic. And patience of, you know, of, of our operators and our parents, uh, you know, for the safety of everyone is, is best, so.
Well, and a suggestion to the parents to maybe leave a little bit earlier.
Yeah, definitely. And the first day of school, I think even the bus kids get dropped off because it's a big deal.
Yes, it's true.
Know the parents. So that first couple of days, I think, won't be like a true picture of the rest of the, of the year.
I think you're right about that.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, the, the new intersection at Pond in, in front of Pearlie, uh, it's gonna be a challenge. But the, 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 the roadways configured is such for the safety of pedestrians and motorists uh, to eliminate some of that, uh, haphazard turning that occurs. Uh, it, it's gonna be busy, but it's not gonna be as busy as people think because the population of the school has decreased. However, we've taken that school, and it's still a public school, and we're putting a community senior center on it. So, you know, we're changing, we're changing pattern again. Um, and, and, and part of, uh, Officer Alchevsky's job for our first month out of the box is we'll do meet and greets with all the schools. Uh, he'll have, uh.
And the students.
Close, and, and then we're, we're hoping to have an open house with the students, uh, you know, a, a captured audience, so to speak, on their time. So he'll be there, and then, um, the, uh, the meet and greet with the administration. Uh, we have very good working relationship with the administration with, uh, a couple of the sergeants who, uh, have kind of picked up the role as a quasi-SRO. Uh, he'll still be there. Their supervisor's the work with, uh, Officer Alchevsky. But, uh, it will take us a couple of months to, to get this going. And then really, it's up to the district what they want with it. You know, I've, I've, I've listed some things for the superintendent. Uh, uh, there's about twelve initiatives here. We're the resource. You're the customer. You tell us what you need, what you want. We'll be here for recommendation concerning safety. That's our primary goal. Policy development, uh, crisis manual update, which we've done. But that's just the start, but that's just the start. Uh, there'll be a, there'll be a quarterly review because things change. I mean, we, we went from Code Blue to Alice, right? So there's a, there's a, there's a paradigm shift with safety initiatives, and that changes every day. Um, yeah, we have truancy, residency. Drug and addiction is going to be our primary, uh, 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 goal. And that's a department-wide initiative as a district-wide initiative.
Excellent.
And, um, we have CCI, the Collaborative with the District Attorney's Office.
Right.
This officer will attend the safety meetings. I'd like to see to manage the safety initiatives from the bottom up instead of the top down, so we can identify where our problems are. Um, it's great that I go to a meeting and I, I hear things, but I'd like to know what they're doing on the ground with the, uh, with the customer base, so.
But, yeah.
We're gonna try to change that a little bit.
Safety meetings, I'm sure, will be invaluable in, in, you know, helping to develop the, the role of the school resource officer and find out where the needs are and, you know, just hearing.
You ready for this?
Every.
Yes.
Principals.
Not till Monday.
Have you been trained in Alice?
No. I have done some work with Officer Raymond, um, when we did some stuff over at the Pearlie for, uh.
He'll be trained by the end of the year.
That's what I recognize.
Yeah, I was gonna ask. You're going to be trained.
What's going to happen is, is as I said, I had to tackle, uh, various problems and kind of pick and choose officers to do certain initiatives. I couldn't just put it on one officer, so everybody had a little piece of the pie. I'm gonna be taking that away little by little, giving it to this officer, and then supervising, taking a holistic approach to that. Uh, and, and I think we'll get a, a bigger bang for our buck doing that. And the NEMLEC initiative, uh, I, I, I will offer another officer to NEMLEC only because I would s- it, it would be uh, a missed opportunity if, if Officer Alchevsky wasn't involved in the NEMLEC initiative. Officer Raymond is very well-trained. He's an Alice trainer and he's a NEMLEC officer in our Stars program, but he also needs to be there. And then I can pull some of the, uh, Stars initiatives with policy development from Raymond and give it to him. So that, so that everything, that, the dots will finally connect.
Oh, you might, yeah, you might not have been on the committee when we did the NEMLEC.
No.
She's not familiar with that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank God, I'm not the only one.
NEMLEC is a law enforcement council of sixty-two cities and towns. And, uh, they, it was, uh, formed in the fifties and sixties to collaborate and share resources. So what we did, um, it was what, four, four years ago when I first met you? Uh, I, I came to the superintendent. I was very, um, uh, much in desire to be in NEMLEC. And, uh, because I wanted that initiative for our schools. Well, they have a Stars component. It's a school threat assessment team. And they help schools develop policy. Uh, if you have a critical incident in your school, they will respond with a team. Uh, we did on, uh, the death of one of our students.
Students, yeah.
And it's just an additional resource. We don't take it. This, this organization, NEMLEC, does not take charge of anything. I'm in charge of the NEMLEC assets when they're in my community, whether it's a SWAT initiative or a Stars initiative. And it's my, it's my operation, so they don't come in and take over your community. It's still your community initiative. And, um, so the super and I have had a, um, a, 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 a relationship with regard to NEMLEC, and it's worked out very well. They've helped us in a couple of other.
Yeah, they have.
Critical incidents, uh, to try and, uh, provide not only assets, but it's not the first time this has happened, uh, in other districts. So we get to share those resources and share, uh, what was successful and what was not.
Yeah, it's been great. Thank you.
We've shared the cost. I think it was, I think it was total five thousand. I think we've, we've.
We share the cost.
I had a couple of questions, and, and thank you for meeting with me.
Sure.
Last week, whatever it was. Um, two questions and not, well, one is not, one can't be. Is it gonna be a uniform position or is it, are you gonna be?
Just, just like that.
Just like that, okay. My other, the, I was at Pearlie the other day, and it surprised me when we were taking a tour. I think Carol was saying, your desk, your home base, if, I guess the way it was described.
It's a remote office.
Yes.
Is, I guess my question is where are you gonna be spending your ti- I was surprised that it was in a school with, without many students, frankly.
Well, what we did was, was, when, when the.
I'm not challenging, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Not at all. When, when the superintendent and I, uh, went over, she's getting, she's getting some technology as well too. Um, the original SRO sat at the, at the high school, and this is just the start to see what this is gonna play out as. Uh, we chose Pearlie number one because it doesn't have any space or capacity issues. And secondly, um, I find that the officer will spend very little time, if any, there. It's a place to go if he has to have a place to go in addition to the police station. Uh, but I think moving forward with our new school at Pembroke, uh, the new population and configuration of our grades, we may find out that he may not need a space, or that space may not be, uh, if it's underutilized, we don't use it.
Okay.
Right.
And, and I think that, um, we chose it basically for convenience at this time. And I think what we have to do is vet out what this looks like. Um, and we didn't wanna set up a camp or a home base and, and put a lot of time and effort into it, realizing that that's not really, we wanna lay down our, our, our brick and mortar. We may wanna be, we may be at the high school. Oh, we may be at Pembroke. Uh, we may n- we, we may not even need the space. Uh, it was just something to say, at least we have a place to call. In addition, yeah, a place to sit down if you have to.
Yeah, when you had said that, I'm like, he's not gonna be. He's never gonna be at.
I mean, cell phone services spotty in our schools. We're trying to fix that, uh, just some access to, if you need a place to sit down and make a phone call to a parent and you're not accessible to the police station, maybe you can just hit the Pearlie school. Um, and then, like I say, the, the, the addition of, of our senior center i- i- is another whole situation that I'm working with 'cause that's still a public school right next door. And, um, you know, I want, uh, the officer to, she's not called a principal. Is she a coordinator or a director?
Director.
A director. So I want her to be included in our, uh, plans because those are students. And, and our plan should be district-wide, period. So that's our, that's our plan.
Well, I'm very excited. I'm sure the rest of the committee shares in my excitement because it, it's definitely a much-needed position with the times that we're all facing these days. You know, so I look forward to seeing how the kids, you know, respond. Cause I think they'll also have that sense of support. I, I don't think that they've ever not had that though. Because we do have, we have always had police presence, which has been great.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but just having that one person.
For the kids to know that this, this fellow, this officer is our officer, and we can come up to him and we can trust him, we can talk to him, and he can talk to us, and he cares about us, and we, you know.
It's a comfort level. There's an exchange back and forth, and they know that if they have a problem or if they need a question answered, maybe they can come ask me.
Right.
Right, right, and I just think that's so important for, you know, children at the developmental levels.
And I think you saw in, in, in the officer's bio that I had, uh, well, he actually wrote it, but, um, I provided it to you that, um, uh, just for the public, um, Officer Alchevsky was an EMT for twenty years.
Yeah.
Working for AMR. There was a, a redistricting of that company, as most people are aware, in our business. And, um, he was a, an officer over in West Newbury, uh, came over and started working for us, self-sponsored himself through the Full-Time Police Academy. So, uh, this normally would've taken six months to occur. Uh, there was an assessment process, and under the Governor's Task Force, then Governor Patrick, the task force said that the resource officer is a shared appointment by the superintendent's office and the police chief. Uh, so, you know, I would not put an officer in the schools that would, may not be a good fit. Uh, this just so happens that when I posted the positions and I followed the collective bargaining agreement, after all of that was vetted through with the assessment process, Henry was chosen. And, um, I met with the superintendent and shared the bio, and, uh, uh, he has been on the department.
And, and we actually met during Alice. I, I, now that I, I see him, I remember. You were the bad guy. You was. Played a good bad guy.
Thank you.
So can I just ask, have you had any experience, um, with the drug abuse prevention programs? Or with, do you, you know how to administer Narcan or?
Yes, so.
Experience talking with teens or younger kids or?
As, as the chief alluded to, um, I worked as a paramedic for American Medical Response Ambulance Company for twenty years. So we started giving Narcan back in the late nineties.
Oh, okay.
So it's been a problem. It's been around for a while. It's reached epidemic proportions now, um, so it's in all the news and, and everything. But, um, yeah, so I'm familiar with dealing with it, um, drug overdoses.
Recognize the signs of various different drugs.
Yes, absolutely. So, um, that's something I'm very, very comfortable with. Um, and then working over in West Newbury, we had three schools there as well. So it was a very small department, so there'd be times when I was the only officer on, and anything that went on at the schools, I would end up responding to. So I've dealt with student issues, people stealing iPhones, Facebook, threatening.
Like bullying and.
It's unbelievable the amount of stuff that goes on.
I'm sure.
I mean, I have a four-year-old daughter, so she hasn't quite gotten that far yet, but, uh, yeah, so I have had some, some dealings with that, so I'm aware of those challenges.
Good.
And, and do you know anything about collaborative problem solving and sitting down with kids and talking to them? You know, a- asking them for their, their input, their thoughts, their ideas, and talking about solutions and?
Um, I don't have any formal training in that, but that's something that I'd be interested in learning about.
Okay, I mean, it, it's kind of an approach to discipline, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Well, I think what will happen is in, in, in that arena, that specialized training, he'll go to NASRO and be certified as a school resource officer. So I'm, I, I need to find a class. There are classes. I'd rather not have to send him to California right now. I'd rather see if we can get something on the east coast. You're not going to California.
There's a lot of fires there anyway. You don't wanna go there.
So, so I think that, that to answer that question more directly, that he will, uh, once he's a certified school resource officer. But, um, I mean, uh, those, those talents that you speak of are twenty-first century policing model. Initiatives today, so, I mean, coming out of the academy less than a year ago, those models, uh, which have come down from the president, the twenty-first century model of policing and those pillars include all of that. It's not like the policing when I started in the eighties. Things have changed, you know, I mean. I don't like to use the word progressive, but I mean, I think there is, th- 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 there is a need to look at the, the, the dynamics of, of American policing today versus in, I mean, you know, we make the news a lot.
Yes, absolutely. You do a great job with that too, in this, in this town in particular. I mean, I'm just very, very impressed. It's a different world we all live in, but it is.
Yes, it is.
But it's what we signed up for.
Yes, that's right.
You have to remind yourself.
That's right. Part of the job, right?
Yep.
Well, I'm so excited and I'm looking forward to seeing you at the schools, and I, I look forward to actually getting an update and just see how, you know, in a couple of months, how things are going and your interaction with the kids. And I'm sure you've already spent time with the administrators and have started to form that.
Yeah, a little bit.
Yeah.
Good.
But I did, uh, not last year, but the year before, um, I went in and taught an internet safety class to fifth graders, which was really fun. And I was shocked at how much they knew about the internet and how savvy they were. And they actually knew some things that I didn't know about the internet. And I'm sure I'm gonna find that with, with, yeah, some of the, I mean, the technology is, it's quite advanced.
Right.
Well, there's gonna be Pokemon Go going on this, this fall. So the kids are gonna be like, running all over the place over Pokemon. That's something for everybody in the schools to be aware of.
It's just gonna be an interesting new challenge, that's all, you know?
Did you know the town hall is a Poki gym?
I've been told a lot of things about that situation.
Kids around City Hall and with their, with Town, Downtown Hall with their.
That's what it is.
I brought my kids here for an errand, and they were so happy. I thought I, I was really gonna annoy them, you know? And they wanted me to stay longer.
Really?
Yeah.
My kids don't do it.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
We'll, on, 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 on an ending note, what we'll do is, uh, we'll come back to the committee in a couple of months. Uh, we'll see, uh, how our, our pilot has gone, and we'll report back to the committee so that if, if there are changes that we need or updates, uh, we'll, we'll let y'all know.
That would be great.
That's great.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Yeah, give my kids names so you can keep an eye on them.
Guys, have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna just change the agenda around a little bit. I wanna go over the crisis manual, um, at this point, so if Heather doesn't mind. Heather, do you mind?
Yeah.
No?[1784.64] No? Thank you.
It's gonna be a long segment, too. Sorry.
Thank you both for coming.
Oh, you're welcome, thanks for having us.
Thank you for providing this wonderful book of. Yeah, of a lot of interesting things, scary things, reality.
Reality.
But it is, when you see it in black and white like this, it's like, but it was, it's great, I'm, I'm happy that you, that you guys took the time to do it, and, um, I'm sure the teachers appreciate it, and it's something that they can look to if we ever experience.
Giving people the tools to, um, you know, handle all these challenges that could come up. Red is a great color, you know?
Yeah.
That was their idea.
That was our first three meetings. It was a long process.
You're not gonna lose the red binder.
Exactly.
So, we'd like to just, uh, quickly talk about some of the stuff here. Um, basically, the start of the process was from the District Safety Committee. They recommended updating the, uh, policy book, the crisis manual. And we found, um, that it was, uh, in a lot of different places, a lot of different formats, all the different forms, so, we compiled it and, um, created this electronic version that's gonna be easier for us to update and to keep track of, you know? So, it was coming from different, um, areas of, of the district. So, that was the, that was the main emphasis of this. So, in the process, um, Hope and I ran a subcommittee with, in collaboration with the police department and the fire department. And we'd like to thank Adam Raymond, as, uh, the chief said. He helped us a lot with, um, the NEMLEC recommendations and the current updates and policies from them. And, uh, Scott Hatch was, um, available and met with us at a lot of meetings, uh, that we had, so we appreciate that, their support. And then, we met with, um, we took a version of this manual in July, we met with, uh, both Chief Mitchell and Chief Cudmore, and got their input, um, to see if, you know, make sure we were up to code and up to spec on that, so we appreciate their help as well. So, some of the major changes, as I said, number one, it's now one document electronically that we can control. Uh, we can get it to, uh, faculty and staff electronically. And, uh, we're also gonna, uh, put booklets in each classroom, we'll talk about that, uh, a little bit later. We did update all the contact and emergency information, uh, for each building, which, uh, was, which was.
Out of, out of date.
Yeah, it was, it was out of, it was out of date, and then, as soon as we did it, it was out of date again.
Yep. We had to redo it.
So, we, you had to keep, you had to keep doing it.
One thing on this, when I opened it, the first page where it has the superintendent, well, so it's page three.
Yep.
Under sell, I'm like, Nextel slash sell, I'm like, Nextel has been out of business for, uh, so, we might actually get rid of Nextel.
Yeah, we'll take that out. Well, that, yeah, that tells you the version we started with.
Yeah, it's pretty old.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, you're right.
Uh, so that was important, and just making sure that we had the, the right information. There are, there, there will be a few changes based on, uh, the last couple of days, or, you know, that we're gonna, we'll, we'll make those changes, uh, before we send.
We'll take that out.
The document.
We, I love this whole thing, I think you've done a fabulous.
Well, thank you.
It's got everything.
But this, this, um, little.
Yeah, we did have some editing.
I can, I can't read it.
We need to make it more readable.
What is it?
It's your letter.
Your letter, yeah.
It was a PDF and we converted it to Word, we've gotta make it more readable.
Oh, that's all, I can send you the left.
Yeah, we know that's not.
I scanned it to them.
Yeah.
Well, under, um, the Pembroke emergency contacts, the personnel trained and restrained.
Yes.
I think there's somebody in there who's no longer works for the district.
Okay.
Is that?
Which one, I'm sorry?
Carissa Bonner?
Oh, Carissa works for us.
She's still here, oh, okay.
Works for us, yeah.
All right, I'm thinking of somebody else.
Yeah, no, she's still here. And then, sorry, I saw all these.
I hope she's not watching. She's probably like, what?
It's easy to get confused. But I just, I saw these groups referred to as a team in some places. And maybe like in the beginning with these contacts, just call them.
What pages are you on, Pam, I'm sorry?
Pembroke Elementary School Team Emergency Contacts.
What page number?
What, you're saying to add that? Just to add, call them a team. If they're called a team in one place, you wanna call them.
Be consistent, yeah.
Yeah, these are just, you know, I'm the grammar hawk type of.
To add team.
Just, yeah. Under all the emergency contacts?
At the header.
At, at the header.
Like Pembroke Elementary School Team, Georgetown Middle High School Team.
If they are a team, which I think I read somewhere, they are a team. Yeah, they're the crisis team.
They are the crisis team.
If they're the crisis team, yeah, just so they can feel more like a team.
So, we, we, we're not gonna go through all of the changes, you have them in red, you know, obviously, you have them.
You have them red.
But we do wanna pu- uh, touch on a couple of them, uh, that, that came about that we thought were very important. The bomb threat updated procedures, uh, that came about through the last couple of years, there's been a lot of, uh, issues with that, especially amongst the schools, so.
Yes.
We really, you know, went back to what we had, and what we had was insufficient based on the old stuff. So, working with the police and fire, we got the updated materials and just formatted, you know, for our purposes. So, that was a big one, and then, obviously, um, the Alice protocols is all new to the district. Uh, and the, the staff and faculty have been trained on that, and the students will be trained, uh, this year, I believe, with the help of the new SRO. And, um, that, it, all that is, is, that language is new. The shelter in place and lockdown procedures are new. Uh, so, we will be rolling those out to the, um, faculty on the first day, on Monday. And then, we'll, we'll be rolling that out with the meetings with the students on the first couple of days of school as well. So, we'll get up to speed on, on those.
And Officer Raymond helped us with the language for that, he got a lot of that from NEMLEC. So, this was kind of like a sample of what NEMLEC had, that's where we got that from.
Great.
Um, and we also created that little chart that's in the back of your folder, it goes over like the, the new procedures. And this, we thought we could have as a visual in the classrooms for teachers, you know, right next to their files.
Oh, nice.
Kind of your shelter in place, your lockdown, your Alice protocols, just so they have them.
Great idea.
Yeah, we're either gonna laminate them or just make sure they're all available at, at the front of the, each classroom.
Yeah, great.
So, uh, at the end, moving forward, uh, how we're, how we're gonna do this, um, we will, again, we will get this to the staffs electronically right away. And then, we'll, we would ask them to sign off that they read and understand the procedures. And then, we will be compiling the books, the proper books, we're gonna, um, we are going to put the room numbers and put each one into each room of all the schools. And then, the administration will be in, responsible for those at the end of each year, collecting them, updating the materials with the SRO, you know, in the, in, you know, through the safety committee recommendations as well, and then putting them all back every year, so.
Good.
My question, I didn't wanna interrupt your very polished presentation.
We had a PowerPoint, but Carol said. Carol said we couldn't put it on.
Actually, it wasn't me, it was your colleagues, it's a PowerPoint. It was Margaret, everybody gave it the same eyes.
There's a lot of good colors and stuff like that.
How does this get, I'm gonna say implemented, and I don't mean that, that's probably not the right word, but how do you go from stuff in a binder to actually knowing?
I was gonna ask that.
With all due respect to the first day of school, new teachers, you know, read this binder and sign off that you read it, that's a lot different than actually knowing this just happened.
Right.
Oh, wait, hold on.
Will this be, will somebody sit down with the staff and go through?
Well, the, the major protocols, a lot of these, the staff are already familiar with, and, and they're just protocols that we've already had. But the new stuff, we can go over them, obviously, the Alice, they were all trained in that last year, um, and new staff will have to get trained in that.
And, well, and I, I guess that's, that was the part two of my question, is new staff, they're twenty-odd new staff members, whatever that number is. I guess they're the easy ones, 'cause they're seeing it for the first time.
Right.
Right.
But are we, do we have a mechanism, mechanism in place for them to get the Alice training, to be caught up on the major stuff that we've done in the past? Wherever it's not gonna do the whole, you know, the, the whole thing with them? I'm sure there is, I'm just.
I would say, Michael, I, I see that as what the SRO would do. So, with, after he gets trained, because it's true, this year, we have a lot of new people. So, we are going to have to pull them aside and just anecdotally, uh, not anecdotally, but, you know, just say, train them, here's how you do it, without having that whole day of training. But going forward, just like we do curriculum, I mean, I would see that the SRO is going to have to do that.
Sure, okay.
And, and the way we're doing.
But we also have to make sure we follow up that it does happen.
Right, absolutely, the, the way we're doing the professional development this year, that's a little more school-based, it's gonna be easiest, easier for us to take the time. Before, we had everything planned, remember, and so we had to find additional time. So, we absolutely, that's on our list to, to do, we know that. Fire drills, you, you do that, you go over that anyway with people on a regular basis, no matter who you are, 'cause obviously, they drill that four times a year. Um, in terms of the, the, uh, Code Blue, you know, those kind of things, you're, you're still gonna, we're still gonna drill those. Alice, we still have to talk about, like, how are we, are we gonna continually drill Alice? But we do have to train, they're right, they're new people, 'cause we're gonna do the kids as well.
Right.
Um, and then, the evacuation plan is really just informing people, making sure people know, what do you do if, if the call comes out, you're, we're evacuating? You know, what are the procedures you're responsible for, and where are we taking people?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like more of a rally, it's a rally point that's recommended by the fire and police. So, if this, if we have to get away from the building far, we need to know where we're going and keep track of everybody, and then, we keep progressing to different spots.
The one that struck, and that makes total sense, the one that struck me is, is odd, it just stuck out to me, was that Pembroke is going to St. Mary's Church on Indorah Street? How the heck are they getting from there to there, like?
A bus, or a bus.
Oh, oh, okay, I thought that was like.
I thought there's gonna be.
Like a line.
It can only go down one way.
It will be a bus.
Okay, all right.
The, the safety committee also has the, uh, bus representative, and they're, they've been part of this whole process. So, we, we do have plans to evacuate from, from our rally points further, you know, so they're, they're with us, they will come buses.
Okay.
Yes, and the police worked with the, the, those two sites to make sure that they were all in agreement, that, and so, we've got that lined up, we can just pick them, yeah, yeah.
So, are you, you planning to do, like, drills with the students in shelter in place, lockdown, evacuated?
Uh, I, I wouldn't say drills, I would say in a presentation, we, we would be, um, explaining what each one means.
Right, but if you, just like we did Code Blue before, if we, if you decided, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna see what, what people understand about this, you could say,
Yes.
this is a drill, shelter in place, and, and see that everybody does it, yeah.
Yes.
I, I think that that's, to Michael's point, is if you don't drill it, then you really don't know that it's, that people understand it.
Yeah, I, I thought you meant drilling differently.
Yes.
You know, I mean.
I think it's right, well, how are we gonna, how are we gonna know that everybody really knows that the system that we've got in place works? You know, it's kinda like the fire drills come four times a year, we get feedback from the fire department exactly, you know, what they saw.
Right, these, these will be, these will be instituted until the school day.
So, the good practice.
Yeah, practice.
Practice is.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be going down into the auditorium and doing the drills on the things, like the Alice was really hands-on with the faculty, you know? Um, it, it wouldn't be like that, it would be just calling for it and seeing how it went, and then, we have safety committees at each school, and we sit down and evaluate, you know, what went wrong, what went right, what can we do better, and then, we institute that stuff.
I think that's a good ques- that's a good topic we could have at the safety meeting, is to talk about particularly Alice, you know, sort of, okay, year two of Alice, what are we going to do, are we going to drill if we are, with what grades, you know, what school, um, and then, with the new staff, you know?
Do we have the schedule for the kids yet?
We don't, that's, I think we've been sort of, this process has been in place, I, we had talked, I had sent some.
And how long is that?
I, I, for the students, the drill for the students? I don't know, I, I don't think it's as in, it's not as intense, obviously. Um, but I'm thinking it's, you know, a couple of hours, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking that, and it doesn't have to be maybe all in one hour. That's what we've been talking about, do we do it through health classes, how, you know, do we do it through gym classes, you know? How do we do it so that we can work, work on a time when everybody would have availability? So, that's part of this little safety committee that we're working on, driving this kind of stuff, we, we haven't gotten to that point, we just know we're gonna train kids this year at some point. We don't know quite what that looks like, but I'll get back to you as soon as we have more information, and we'll talk about the safety. Are you gonna still do the safety committee, Barbie?
I'm not sure.
Oh, oh, I wasn't sure if you.
Not sure right now.
I don't, I wasn't sure if.
I, I think.
If we have the, okay. Well, somebody will come, right?
Yeah, yeah. I'd be happy to come.
So, eh, well, you've always come.
Am I the alternate or something?
I don't know, I'll have to check that out, I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, because when is the, when are you gonna be doing the first one, it's usually pretty quickly after.
Yeah, we'll probably do something in September, yeah, and then, yeah, we've been doing the second Thursday of every month.
Right.
But, you know, just going forward, we'll, we'll, that's, I think that's something we definitely wanna keep on the agenda, 'cause that's new enough, we wanna make sure that it becomes institutionalized.
Especially with the SRO.
Yeah, I mean, that's gonna change a lot of things for us in a positive way, I think, in terms of things that we can do that we were having other people take, responsible for.
Right.
Yeah, we'll centralize things a little bit, I think that's great.
Yeah, it's a great document, I know it took a lot of time and effort and collaboration with many people, but it sounds like it went pretty well.
Yes, I'm sure there were times when they wished they had not taken the job, but, uh, they stuck with it.
We were, we were volunteers from the safety committee.
Volunteers.
That's right.
Is that what you're calling it?
Yeah, we're calling it volunteering, yeah. Uh, but I should, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the principals, uh, for allowing us to get together, 'cause we have been meeting quite regularly, uh, at, at the different schools, so they, they have been allowing us to, to get together during the school day to get a lot of this done, so.
Been a team effort.
I think this is really, very important work, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much, both of you are coming. Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, uh, so, Heather Torrey is here.
Hi, Heather.
Food Services Meal Charging Policy.
Everybody's on tonight, right?
Yeah.
Getting ready for the year ahead.
Oh, yes.
Ready to roll.
Hello.
How are you?
Good.
Hi.
Hey.
How are you all again? Having me.
Thanks for coming.
So, the meal charging policy, hoping that having a policy in place will help us with, um, the, the. The debacle that's occurring with the.
Debt. Debt, the incurred debt that just keeps going.
And looking at it, it seems like it's pretty concise, clear, you know, parents gotta be notified that this is in place, and I'm hoping that we will see a, a significant difference in the amount of debt.
Us, too.
Yeah.
Um, what was that number again, off the top of your head, what is the debt, was it?
Deficit?
Fourteen.
Yes, the dollar.
I believe it was down to twelve total.
It was down to twelve, okay.
So, when you talk to, um, other people that are in your position in other districts, do they say that this is an, an issue there as well, or does it? I mean, I'm sure it's an issue, but to this extent?
I would say not to this extent. I'm not sure how, why specifically it has gotten to this level. Um, it's consistent across the state, and I believe across the nation, that we need more guidance from the USDA on how to handle outstanding meal charging, and, um, more guidance on how to develop policies, because it, it's taken a long time for us to come up with something, and, and we, I mean, it's still difficult to consider implementing.
I mean, maybe these other communities already have this policy, but we've been reluctant because we don't like the idea of bringing parents to court, you know?
We don't like that.
But we know for sure that what we're saying in this policy is what we can do.
We want students to be fed.
I believe so.
Joan, Joan researched that, so I believe so, you know?
Okay, so within the law, we can, we're not saying that we can do things in this policy that if a parent.
It's not my understanding.
Challenged us, that they would say, oh, yeah, no, they can't do that.
Correct, we modeled, um, our policy off of several policies that, um, surrounding districts use. Um, and, and most of them are very consistent and have some different level of, like, a cap on how many meals students are allowed to purchase and charge. And, uh, it is typically a little bit more strict the older you get, because students have a greater level of understanding of why And, uh, it is typically a little bit more strict the older you get, because students have a greater level of understanding of why the restrictions are imposed at the high school level and the kindergarten, they might not necessarily get it, so.
Right, right.
And also when we were interviewing the new business manager, it's actually one of the questions that I asked, is if they had a similar problem as we do, and she said, no.
Oh, okay.
And did she say?
I, I, I don't, I assume that they have, she knows of a system, or you know, she has experience with it, so I'm, I'm hopeful that, that she can bring something else.
Did she elaborate?
No, she, she thought it was kind of crazy, I, I think she responded like, what, what are you talking about? I said, well, we're owed, you know, fourteen thousand dollars or so, and she said, oh, no, that doesn't matter.
We shut them off, yeah.
So.
Oh, that's a high school only.
We're just bleeding hearts.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, and in your research, there were a lot of policies you looked at that were stricter?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Than this?
There were some that don't, like for example, at the high school level, that wouldn't allow students to go into the negative at all, they wouldn't be allowed to get anything. Um, so even ours, even though it's much more, um, comprehensive than it was in the past, it is, I think, a, a happy medium with some of the examples that we've seen from other districts.
My concern is seeing us on TV, like, uh, you know, a year or so ago, when that lunch monitor, the lunch-
Threw away.
Yeah, wouldn't let the child, I just get so nervous that we are not, like, I, I just wanna make sure that we, we are saying what we can do.
I, I will get more information on that Barbie for sure.
You know, sure.
I'll ask Joan, where she got that, and I'll, I'll have it reviewed by-
But, but we fully intend to work closely with families and this.
Yeah.
No, I know, but still, the bottom line is, no, I know that, but the bottom line is if- Without depriving children of food or without, I mean, we don't wanna do that.
Well, yeah, you would deprive them of food though.
No, we wouldn't. We don't want to.
Well, well, you would, you only give them, well, it would be cheese sandwiches.
Well, I mean, cheese sandwiches.
The alternative, but not forever.
Yeah, it's ten.
Not forever.
So indeed, we, we can certainly reach out to the parents and try, but we're not saying that the parents are going to want to work with us.
Exactly, and I think that's a big part of it.
So if it comes to the point where that child has the amount of food that we will give them and then they're cut off, I'm just, I just wanna make sure that we have that right to do that.
I, I will definitely, I will definitely look into that for you.
We also talked about, talking to the parents about the, the free and reduced.
Reduced meal.
Yeah, we couldn't not serve children that were in that situation.
Right, but, but for those parents who-
Right, correct.
They wouldn't necessarily be in that position.
It wouldn't be a problem, it wouldn't be a problem, although reduced could.
But for those parents who don't want to sign up, or you know, the, the stigma, whatever.
Well, but no one would know, nobody would know.
Exactly, but that's what has to get across to them.
But now with the point of sale, they're saying nobody would know, it's, it's less recognizable if they're in the free and reduced.
Right. I mean, if they're in the free, yeah.
I think there's the sort of legal thing and then there's what we consider to be the, the responsible thing, right? So I don't think we as public schools have an obligation to feed every child. I think we have an obligation, the kids who are qualified, we have to make sure that they get a lunch at school. The, the sort of moral right thing is we don't wanna see anybody not get a lunch, right? So that's the, that's the competing interest, so I will, I will, um, I will definitely have this looked at by, maybe we'll ask Naomi to look at it, if that would make you feel more comfortable, and then, um, but I, I think that, um, as Heather said, you know, there are many districts doing it, but let's just make sure that, just for, for our benefit.
But this policy does allow for us to work with families, and, you know, so that they're never taken by surprise.
Absolutely. No, no one should be taken by surprise.
No.
No.
What have we done over the summer to collect some money?
Joan has sent out, um, numerous letters.
Numerous, numerous letters.
To-
Because I'm on the committee.
I was gonna say, did you get one?
Do you want to?
My kids bring their lunch. Mine too.
Okay, so numerous letters have got, and have you seen the letters?
She sent the letter saying you have a certain amount of, she, she said you have a certain amount of time to pay or we're going to take you to small claims.
To small claims.
One of the, when we, in governance, um, Monday, whenever we met, one of the things we talked about was actually having this go into effect October first.
October first.
So there's sort of a soft start, like a, yeah.
So the, so they have the opportunity to review this, and they will have, to be educated, and then we start the policy October first, so that they know what's coming.
Exactly.
That way we know students shows up the first day of school.
Does that make sense? I know you weren't there, but that's what we had discussed.
And Joan did mention that to me, so, and I think that that's a good idea, I actually met with my, um, team today to sort of go over some start of the year, um, updates, and I gave them a heads up about what this policy might look like, even though it hasn't been, you know, officially adopted yet, um, so that they're not surprised, um, so giving them the extra month to sort of work with me on developing like the most, um, discreet um, method of adhering to the policy, so that we minimize any impact on the student and also on the staff, because it is, it's difficult for them.
It's hard for them, yes.
Oh my goodness, the kids don't have, probably have no idea that the parents haven't paid, like that is-
Yeah, that is a problem.
Yeah, that's tough for the, for the kid, what do you mean?
So we did, we did a little bit of, um, role playing on like how do you answer some of those tough questions, um, to try and help get them starting to think about what, what it's going to look like. So I think giving, giving us a month would, would be fine.
And I'm sure you didn't, certainly don't know the details, I know you were talking at one point about, you know, you're gonna have the alternative lunch trays sort of sitting by the register and then ready to go.
Ready, yeah.
What, what about the day eleven student who is no longer able to buy something? I assume you have a comfortable way of that as well.
So, right, so it would be the same sort of thing, they just wouldn't receive that meal that we have ready at the register. So, um, if they were receiving the alternate meal, we would have to do a swap at the point of sale. Um, but if they got to the, to the point of sale and they were not permitted to get a meal, presumably they would have been told X number of times, like, you have this many days left, like you're not gonna be able to, so.
I would think after day one, they're probably not gonna go up and buy food, or try to buy it.
Yeah.
One would think, and especially once you start getting the alternate meal, you'd think that the message would come across, but again, we haven't implemented it yet, so we'll, we'll be sorting out all those details out, um, on the phone.
Margaret has started ones.
Yes.
I, I'm, I'm just, I'm wondering if, um, we could have adjustment counselors tell the child before they go to the cafeteria, because, you know, I mean, I don't know about high school, but, you know, certainly in middle school, to be warned so that they don't go in the line, they're, you know what, honey, you're, you just, at this, at this moment, you, you can't catch a lunch, or you know, we're gonna call a parent and, you know.
And come in my room, I'd have peanut butter and jelly for it.
Yeah, I would, that's what I would do, I'd be having peanut butter and jelly.
Oh, no peanut butter.
Yeah, we'll, we'll call up there and ask them to bring your lunch, but so that they don't get in that position of getting in the line and then.
That's it, they could call the parent and ask the parent to bring a lunch, that's, that's a great, that's a great idea.
I think that's a great idea.
That's a great, and you mean for all grades?
Well, I know in elementary, they're not gonna be denied, but like in sixth and up, it, it looks like after that tenth time, they're not getting any.
But maybe even in elementary, just to let them know as well that-
We, exactly, that we, we can-
Because they'll switch their lunch out and-
Right, yeah, so you stop.
It's a good idea.
Well, one of the things that we talked about when this all started, I forget when we started talking about it, either May or April.
It was May, it was back then, yeah.
Was that there would be some kind of plan with the counselors, so that it didn't get to the point where a student got to meal eleven and was denied, like, and I don't know if that's in place yet, if there's a plan in the different schools for the counselors to have a, like a protocol to go through.
I don't, well, I'm probably not sure, cause we're just doing the policy now, we, you know, once it's adopted, then, then the schools will make the arrangements.
Right. Right.
Right.
Because, you know, by the, the third meal or whatever, I would hope that the school would be working with the family, so that they're not getting, my, my hope would be that no child would get to meal eleven.
Right, right.
You know?
Yeah, I think we all share that hope.
You know, so, again, this has to be adopted first, and then, was, that was sort of the discussion?
I mean, those details can even be included in the policy, what would maybe make sense to me and feel free to, you know, chime in, is when they reach that point where they're going to be swapping over into the alternate meals, a notification can go to the adjustment counselors, so we can get, um, school administrators involved, because as we know, notices from the food service department don't seem to be having the impact that we're hoping. Um, but that might be a natural point to get them involved, or even after the second, I'm not sure, whatever the school committee thinks.
I mean, that won't be a good idea, and the adjustment counselors like find out, you know, something's happened at home, I mean, if they didn't, you know?
Yeah, they might have information we don't.
Right, yeah, I mean, jobs have been lost, just, you know, and then they could think of ways to support the student in.
Right, and if this adjustment counselor knows the child for other reasons, perhaps they might have a relationship with the family, where they can talk to them, you know, or they might wanna think about filling out this form, you know?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Right, right.
I think one of the things that we will have to think about is how are we going to communicate this to all the people who need to know about it, right? So let's say the committee adopts the policy tonight, and, you know, kids come back to school, so, so Margaret will probably put it on her this week, you know, check, there's a new policy, I'll do a blog about it, we'll probably, you know, but, but it's like, how, I wanna make sure that everybody isn't surprised by it.
I plan on going to the parent information nights.
Parents' information nights, okay, that would be good.
Good idea.
And how will we talk to the kids about it, like would that be something that, at, in the cafeteria, like at the, at the middle high school, Peter, somebody? How, how are the kids gonna know that this new policy is in place?
They'll probably call it to their attention, uh, when we do the handbook changes at the beginning of the year.
And put something out like on your morning announcements, that there's a policy change and attach the policy?
I think the most important, the most important folks that this affects is the ones who are currently in arrears, and we know who they are, so we can reach out
Right.
more directly, more forcefully, not forcefully, but more specifically to those folks, just cause it's, they're the ones, they're the students who would be impacted.
Directly, yeah.
More directly, yeah. Right, because, because we're thinking, we're thinking that they get the month of September, cause we did have this discussion, if you, if you get, you have the month of September to get yourself current. Right, but if, if October third or whenever this starts, you're not current, the child gets the alternate meal.
Right.
And then it, it actually, um-
So it starts right away for them.
For, for me, having that buffer month takes a little bit of stress off of me, because that was my big question, what do we do about the students on day one?
The first day of school.
Right. Yeah, oh, sorry, you can't get lunch.
I mean, this, the school committee covered the balance that, that we were in deficit, but the, it doesn't mean that the individual people's balance went away. That, that balance still, still exists.
Right. And then that money, it, once things, if it gets paid, then it goes back to the school committee?
It's collected. Goes back to, it goes back to food service, revolving account.
That's a good question, that's a question I had last year, where does it go once?
That's what I thought Joan said, but I will double check.
Well, but if it came from the school committee, if they're covering it, wouldn't it go back once they got?
Well, it could go back into the general fund, but I don't know where it, it-
Right, the, the tricky thing is if it goes back into this school committee fund.
School committee fund, where do you put it?
It needs to be, essentially it needs to be used, or otherwise it's going back to town, there's not, yeah, so.
Needs to be allocated somewhere, sure, yeah.
Yeah, so you know what, let me, let me research that, I'll put that on my list.
So then it should go, and then you would start even that much higher up.
And it's revolving account, so you start out with a buffer, which helps.
Right.
Okay, so I'm gonna look at where the dollars go, when, when we col- when we collect money.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay.
Okay, so are we going to go ahead and make a motion for this and then you're gonna find out legalities?
Yeah, I mean, obviously if it's not, uh, you know, then we'll have another conversation, but as I said, I, I think, because I don't think legally we are responsible to feed every child, I think that's going to be, that's going to be fine, but you know what, just, it doesn't hurt to have it reviewed, so we all have a peace of mind, you know? So I'm happy to do that.
Okay, uh, I will make a motion to approve the new meal charging policy as amended to begin on October third, twenty sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on it? All in favor?
Can I just have like one, one more question?
So other districts have this policy, right?
Yes, similar, I mean, similar variations on the theme.
Okay.
Similar. Okay, just in the vein of, is it legal?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
I'm, I'm ready.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Thank you Heather, thanks for coming.
Before you go, in putting you a little bit on the spot, cause I know it wasn't really on the agenda, food services in general,
Mm-hmm.
from a, I know there was a, a bit of a cash flow issue from, from operations, and I know participation is tricky and, um-
It's a gentle way to put it. Appreciate that.
Are we absolutely, um, are we doing stuff to fix that?
Yes, so this is obviously part of it, the charging policy, we had to make some cuts to labor hours and moving into the school year, we'll have to watch closely on our participation compared to labor hours, there's a standard metric, the meals per labor hour, which helps us identify whether we're, you know, falling in line with what we're serving and what we're using in terms of labor. Um, and I plan on watching the food budget as closely as possible and utilizing the USDA foods options that we have, um, hopefully as efficiently as possible. So, labor, the labor is a big one.
And then, and you look at things like vending machines, right, where, aren't you doing some other kind of revenue generation, anything?
Oh, yeah, we're increasing the, um, price of the, the snacks, to try and help with, um, a little extra revenue source there, and, um, yeah. We're, I, when we had the meeting today, we, um, set goals on how we could increase participation, so each kitchen has their own set of goals that they're gonna be working on throughout the school year to help bolster the program and hopefully get more kids interested in the program.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Heather.
Good luck, so much.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So now do you, what would you like to do now?
Uh, just look at the staffing update.
Okay.
Um, so it looks like you're moving along with-
We are.
Uh, filling the positions that we had open, um, how are the, the three that are open, how is that going?
Okay, so-
Well, the four, because you have the two.
Right, so, so Jack's secretary is one, we think we are gonna have that filled. Um, and then the biggest gap right now is at the middle high school in special education, particularly at the middle school in the compass program.
I know, and that's what scares me.
Yeah, so, and, and then we have a number of paraprofessional positions that, but the, uh, new special ed coordinator, you know, started a couple of days ago and, and he's got interviews scheduled and, and that's moving, that's moving forward.
Oh, okay, so he-
So it really is the, the compass, um, program at this point, we may be in a situation where we might have to hire somebody on a substitute basis and just keep searching, but we, and we're also looking again at, um, you know, Margaret was looking at people for her compass program, but she was really looking for elementary kinda folks, you know, maybe we need to go back and have Jack and Peter look at that list and see if there was anybody that they'd like to pull back in to look at again.
Is it that people, people aren't out there applying for the job, or we're not finding the right match, what's the?
This is not a great time to be looking for it.
This is not, yeah, this is not-
Everyone's where they wanna be.
We've gotten to that point.
For sure.
And, and what, would you say?
Very different if it was February, March.
So, so is that, that doesn't answer my question, are, are the, is it an issue of, of fit, or there's just nobody out there, cause everyone has their home for the?
Very, very few people, and some of the-
We only have five applicants for that position.
And, 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 uh, some of the people that we called for that position had just taken out.
They accepted other jobs.
Right.
It's, it's hard this time.
It's, it is hard this time.
Okay.
And it, you know, I mean, you're working, you're looking for a certain skill set too, like a lot of people that are in special education are certified in like moderate special needs. Um, these programs really, the preference would be to have people certified in severe special needs, and that is a certification that isn't as, isn't as prevalent.
Have you tried, um, some colleges, some colleges at the master's level to say, we're looking for, you know, this type of a person who might have just recently graduated with a master's degree in special needs, and have you tried some of the, you know, like Leslie or, you know, any of those colleges?
I've reached out to my own mother for a year.
Yeah.
And didn't get, uh, any good response from them.
I mean, most people do look at school spring.
Sure, I mean, that's the biggest source for, for educators.
But I think it's a combination, and, and there were people we interviewed and they weren't a fit, so, you know, it's a combination of both of those things, I think, like that. But we, we are not giving up, you know, we, we are not giving up, I mean, the good news is, I mean, Jack literally had to build, I'd say, seventy percent of his department. Really, I mean, we have some great people coming back, but a, a lot of key positions, and we are very excited about the folks that have, that are coming on board. I think, um, it's always hard to see people leave, but, you know, there's good people, you know, that are coming to our, to our district and we're excited about it.
So how many paraprofessionals do we need, one, two?
I, I still need two.
Two.
I, I only need five.
So we're almost there.
But these positions not being there on Tuesday are not going to interfere with any like IEPs or?
How's that affect the IEPs?
Well, I'm interviewing on Monday.
Okay, but say-
Can you start tomorrow?
Yeah. So does that mean yes, that they would be impacted?
That's what I, I hired, um, someone, um, yesterday, yesterday or today, um, and I did ask for her availability, I, you know, and she was able to start on Monday, you know, for new teacher, um, so Monday when I interview, that will be the, the question, you know, how much notice do you need to give your present place and would you be able to start ASAP, so.
But to the, to the answer to the IEPs though, we will have to shift people in order to be able to, you have to cover the IEPs.
Right, but-
Well, exactly, absolutely, you have to.
Just to be in compliance with the grid.
And the positions, the positions that I'm meeting right now are actually, they're instructional paras working with, um, uh, special ed teachers. So the program paras are all set, so children that are, you know, require a high level of support, I have all of those. So it means that maybe the special ed teacher has to work with a larger group of kids, rather than two, you know, rather than two, you might have to work with four. So we won't be out of compliance with the two positions that I need, so in that, in that way, you know, I'm, I'm not worried.
That's good.
But the middle school is concerned now.
Two teachers, two teachers, two specialized teachers at the middle school?
Actually, no, we, we hired one, so it's, it's, we hired the high school, it's the middle school.
Hired one, just the one.
It's just one.
The five paraprofessionals?
I was, Peter kidding?
He was kidding, no, he wasn't kidding.
No, you're serious?
Why, they're all from the compass program.
No, four from the compass.
Oh, sorry, four from the compass program.
One just Sunday night from-
Why aren't they on here?
Uh, she, she has, I think she put, um, multiple, she should have put multiple, cause, cause they were chang- they were changing on a regular basis.
Oh, special ed, professionals.
Yeah, yeah, professionals.
And that's four?
He needs total, Peter needs five.
Five.
One maps and.
One maps and four high school compass. Although I think I might only need three because we're gonna move somebody from upstairs that, uh, we don't need because someone went out of district.
Mm-hmm.
So, call four, three in, in, uh, high school compass and one in middle school maps.
So, they're interviewing tomorrow and I'm sure interviewing. I mean, when I looked at school spring for that, I think there were fifty-five applications. So I'm thinking in the fifty-five applications, there's four qualified people.
Right.
Um, I'm, you know, if we were in the same situation as the, as the teachers, um, you know, then we would be worried, but.
The only issue is, you know, everybody, of course, is hiring right now. So I had reached out to five people yesterday and all five of them had, had gotten jobs.
Had accepted jobs. That's interesting. So.
Okay.
We will keep working on that.
Okay, um, school reports. Margaret and Peter, you wanna come up?
We had a lot of, uh, while they're coming up, we had a lot of articles in the Georgetown Record.
I know.
Yeah, thank you.
Were they all about guys? I had a very good reading.
Guy was very, very known, like.
Like PR bro.
Popular man.
Because they both, they both mentioned he was the, he was in their Hall of Fame. Alright.
That's funny.
I think, I love the height, the title, best, right guy for the job or something.
Right.
Alright.
Okay, so.
Who wants to start?
Um, I'll start. So, I just wanna start by saying that, um, usually every year in the summertime, two or three people will hear I'm a principal and say, oh, you have the summer off? And I say, this is like my busiest time of year. And so I, the school is constantly busy in the summertime. Um, you know, we have summer camps, we have tutoring, um, there are people registering, leaving, so it is a thoroughly busy place, closing up from the year, getting ready. Um, and I, so I wanna go through my list of thanks. Um, I wanna thank Mike Anderson. Um, he always does an amazing job. He is so responsive, you know, with the grounds, those were challenged this year. And, um, you know, he really stepped up to the plate and everyone he works with. Um, Eric Stevenson, Jacob Hamlin, Lisa Spencer, David Collins.
Yeah.
Um, they did a fantastic job. Tim Regan and Dan Manning at Pearlie. Um, I know, you know, again, you heard Mike earlier. And, um, when Mr. McGee comes back, we know summer's, summer's over. He's a phenomenal man. We're very lucky that he works with us. They all, did this all around all the summer camps that we have. Um, at, we started the year, started the summer at Penbrook with Camp Invention. Heidi Beegan was the director. We had four teachers and there were sixty-eight students, so we doubled.
Sixty-eight?
So we doubled in one year. Last year we had two teachers and thirty children, so we've doubled, doubled the enrollment.
It doubled it, doubled it.
Yes, we loved it.
Wow.
Um, four classrooms, uh, an overflow class, so it was really busy. Penbrook Adventure Camp with Elizabeth Carroll was, um, full with about eighty students throughout the six weeks. That's not eighty all at once, that could be, you know, a couple of different, um, weeks. Um, Pearlie was very busy with Pearlie Pals and their Integrated Summer Camp for six weeks. Lynn Neuss was the director. Um, there were two classrooms, um, with teachers Heidi Beegan, Laura Sedden, Lauren McLean, and Kirsten Lawler, and Jen Raul. And they had about twenty-five children, including our greenhouse students participate. We had special ed teachers that were tutoring in school and also students that were, you know, out of school. Um, they did home visits. I'd like to thank Amanda Harding. And as she said to me, I don't really work in the summertime, but she worked all summer long. Um, you know, she joined me on interviewing and, um, Jen Raul and Lauren McLean did also. And of course Diane Collins, um, I hope, I hope she's watching.
I'm sure she is.
She, we work, sometimes just the two of us in the building when everyone is, you know, the camp and just, she's always, you know, she's a hard worker, but she makes it so much fun.
She does.
So I really love working with her. Um, and thanks to Hope Doran, you can see, you know, she and Guy worked the summer on the crisis manual, trying to get that done. She worked with Reddicker, having webinars, learning how to do the scheduling. Um, thanks to Lorene Lush.
Lush.
I wrote, I said, this is gonna be, I'm gonna figure out how to say that, um, for her pre-K work. And again, she wasn't scheduled to work this summer, but it actually worked out, well, although I hate to say it, but, um, you know, Laura has been out for a while this, um, summer. So Lorene actually stepped in and while she was in the office, she was also able to get some of the pre-K work done. So, you know, I wanna thank her for that. And of course, always a big thank you to Wes and Barry. They are amazing. Um, you know, anytime I send an email or we need technology, they're right there. And I always laugh with Barry because when he says, I'm taking a couple of days off, I'm like, ah, I start shaking if I can make it through a couple of days. And, um, also this year, we had an excellent professional development that was facilitated by Kate Donlin and Maureen O'Connor. And we had about twenty-five teachers participate and, um, they worked twelve hours. And that really is the focus of our PD this year. We're, um, you know, we're really tapping our, um, our talents within. So that was great. And I wish Joan were here, um, to thank her in person, um, for just her responsiveness and her knowledge. And, um, as you all know, she's so good with the budget and, and numbers, but, um, working with her, she really goes beyond that and understands that the numbers are really about the children. So we're gonna miss her. Um, and I'll.
Was, was the PD guided reading this summer or?
The focus was on, um, s- that guided reading and, well, the first part, the, the teachers worked twelve hours. So the first six hours were spent, um, looking at their units of study and making sure that they could maybe pull some out and make room for the small group instruction. But to do that, you have to make sure obviously you're not, you know, leaving standards that aren't being taught. So that was a big part of the work. And then the second part, their six hours together, was then looking at the units and, um, just aligning and fine tuning those, you know, the lessons. And then, um, and then I want to acknowledge just about every teacher who does come into the school. I always say, try to keep an elementary teacher away from school. You can't do it because they're in, you know, throughout the summer getting ready. And, um, a teacher today in fact said, um, I sit on the beach and think about this. So, um, and as we look to the new school year, um, our Pearlie Integrated Preschool, we have four full day programs and one half day program like last year, as well as our sub-separate greenhouse. And altogether, we have about a hundred and fifteen students enrolled. And remember, some are full day, some are half day, some are Monday through Friday, you know, it's that whole, um, different, um, paradigm.
Margaret, could you just talk a little bit about the olders class? Where that's different?
Yes, so this is a, a little new this year. Um, and we're, we're trying it to see how this works. But because, um, in pre-K, obviously you have children who are just brandy new, three, they, you know, by August thirty-first. But we can also conceivably have five-year-olds if they turn five in September. So we have this wide span. And generally, you know, self-selecting, most younger children, their families do choose the half-day programs, but not always. So, you know, within our full day programs or half-day programs, you can have this real mix. So this year, we actually have enough children who are olders to fill one of the full day classes. So this class will be four and five-year-olds and then the, some of that, you know, pre-kindergarten work can really be targeted to their needs. So we'll see how that goes.
How many, I'm gonna try to ask this question, right? How many olders that would not, that you would expect to go into kindergarten or still other? I guess my question is with that one fifteen number, which without looking at my notes, feels pretty similar to last year. I guess how many are actually students that are around for another year instead of?
That, we have about forty. This, this year, and it does, it actually is in waves. I have found that some ye- some years, many children are moving into kindergarten and we have a, a lot of open spots. And then it's like the wave. Then other years, not many are moving on. So this year, we had about fifty children moving into kindergarten, which I thought was a little low. Um, and then, but, so there were about forty that did not move, you know, that stayed for another year.
Right, that stayed.
They may not be all olders. I mean, those could be three-year-olds and four-year-olds.
Right, right, right. Sure. Did we turn people away?
We haven't turned people away.
I'm totally interrupting your, your, your thing. I'm sorry.
No, and I'm almost done. No, this is really where I wanna talk about going in. Um, we do have a couple of full day spots on Tuesday and Thursday and we have some half day, but we really are almost full. There has been great news.
There have been people coming in.
Okay.
Just the other day, I, Joanne Sherman had people and Lorene both had people.
Okay.
And remember.
And you know what's matter? They have to fit into that, that schedule, that slot, yeah.
That's lots, right, that's lots.
And in the, in the spring, remember, it looked like we had a lot of spots, but this is what happens, you know, the summer ends and people start like freaking out.
Somebody has to figure something out.
Right, right, where am I gonna go? So, um, we usually do fill up and I think that is the case. We're almost full. We still have spots for IEP, so, you know, we'll always have that.
Right.
And then, um, and then at Penbrook, we have, um, our five classes in kindergarten, grades one, two, three, five, and six. And as you know, we're down to four classes in grade four. And we have our new sub-separate sprouts program at Penbrook this year. And we have five kindergarten children and two second grade in our sprouts. And this, our work this year will focus on the small group instruction. That will be the, pretty much the basis of much of our PD. Um, small group instruction and differated, differentiating instruction. Um, we'll continue to refine our supports and structures for students through positive behavior interventions and support, known as PBIS. And, um, the way I describe it, it's not a new curriculum. Responsive classroom continues to be our social emotional curriculum. That responsive classroom is what, um, builds the community, but PBIS is what supports the structure of the community. So, um, that will be also a focus this year.
PBIS, and what does that stand for?
Um, Positive Behavior Interventions Support.
Thank you.
And, um, we know that we are a little challenged by the traffic again to open school, but, um, we're looking forward to school starting and everyone being back.
Now I'm gonna ask my kindergarten question. Are we still eighteen plus or minus?
We have, um, one class of nineteen and four of eighteen.
Okay.
So, and do you know, I mean, we, we've already talked about how the, the assistants will be used.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so the, um, did we find somebody that would fill that position, the half that was gonna be? So Michelle, Michelle, oh, so Tiffany Whiteacre is, um, has chosen to go part-time, so she will take that point seven five.
Perfect.
Yep, it, and, um.
That fell into place.
Yep, she really thought for her family that would fit well, so she will come in at, um, eight-thirty and leave by one.
Okay.
And then Michelle Rio is going to be the other part-time kindergarten in the morning and then library in the afternoon.
Perfect.
And she's really excited, I was saying, she's really excited about that, so we're, we're happy.
Oh, good. Um, so it wasn't obviously the numbers that, um, they had before, but you're in agreement that it all looks good, like the eight-thirty to one, you know, still fills that gap that they really needed. So from one to.
Right.
Two forty-five, it shouldn't be a big deal.
Right, and so I did build the schedule so that the bulk of kindergarten would, their lunch would be like twelve, twenty-five, um, twelve forty, around twelve forty. So the assistants will spend the bulk of the morning in the classroom, you know, with instruction. And then when they go to lunch, the assistants will be there to help with that and then they'll leave at one when the kindergarten goes back into their classroom. And then there will be about an hour and a half with two assistants. Um, but again, you know, and I think I had mentioned that we will have instructional paras and if anybody has holes in their schedule, if, um, you know, we will have a building sub that will work because there aren't meetings all the time. Um, then they will work with students, but if they can get into the kindergarten, you know, we'll do that. So we'll try to build that support for them.
Right, so the building sub should prevent the need to take them, to take the kindergarten aides for.
Well, the.
They won't be the first that you'll go to.
The building sub is the person who will cover for IEP meetings, but I will definitely try to find that support so that I'm not taking the kindergarten, you know, support.
Yeah, good, good. Great. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Margaret.
We're all ready to go at the middle high school.
Good to hear.
What a contrast from last summer. Um, it was, it was good to be in my own building for the summer.
Yeah.
Uh, we did have one camp, um, a special needs camp, but I think the major focus at our school in the summer was technology. And I know Wes was there every day, working hard. Uh, we've reconfigured our network. We have, um, upgraded our, um, wireless network. Um, I, I have to always take these opportunities to thank the PTA. I'm so grateful, uh, for their donation, uh, where they gave us twenty-six thousand dollars this year. Um, and, and we shouldn't forget that they gave us a, a large chunk, um, about six months before that to buy all the Apple TVs. So almost every room in the, in the middle high school has a big screen TV connected to an Apple TV, so we can wirelessly project. And, um, all systems are go for what we hope to be, uh, to launch a one-to-one iPad initiative in the fall. Uh, one of our major initiatives this year is, uh, we have a pilot for that. So one of our teachers is going to, um, um, require or has required her, uh, students in a US History Two class to bring in iPads. We gave the parents the option of the school providing those or they could use theirs. And we're really gonna get, we're gonna find out all the pluses and minuses and really hope to, uh, find the bugs and work them out before, you know, we go live with this thing. And the, the, this teacher, uh, Sandra Schwarzkopf is also gonna be available to help teachers and share what she learns with other staff members. So we're really looking forward to that. Um.
Did anybody opt out? Like, was there, was there, so no parent was like, oh, you know what? That doesn't work, let's switch him out?
No. Nope. Yep.
How many kids, how many kids brought their own versus got from the school?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
I think three brought their own. Out of fifteen, I think three brought their own.
And the ones that brought their own will be configured to whatever's necessary through this?
Yeah.
We're, we're working on this though.
Yeah, they.
We, I'm gonna have fifteen ready for her, even if, if they don't bring them, because I'm, we're not sure what the kids are gonna do. So we're gonna have fifteen ready, uh, actually, we're gonna put it ready for her when these classes start. So she'll, she'll have enough to cover classes. If, if, when the student decides to bring them, then we can approach a subject at that point in time. But I want her ready on day one, so we're gonna get, make sure there's enough for her whole class.
And they're to use it just for that class or will they be using it in subsequent classes then?
We should carry her up, we're all fine.
They, they can, um, anyone can bring their iPad if, if they wanna use it. I mean, kids are, kids and teachers are using their phones now. Or, so any device that they have, they can and they should bring that if that's what they wanna do. This class, they have to have it. So she is gonna be using apps all the time that they need that for and et cetera. Uh, we're providing keyboards for them. She, she has all kinds of plans. She's just started a little blog that I will put online to get it out there. Um, we're really excited. And one of the, the questions that we have is what if a parent wants to use their own? How does that work with getting software and apps on that? And so we're gonna hammer all of that stuff out, um, this year. So we're really, really excited about that. Um.
Yeah, I'm excited to hear in the next couple of months how it's going.
Yep, we'll, we'll bring Sandra in and she'll fill us in.
That'll be great.
Can you refresh my memory about the spring? How are we gonna, is, what are we gonna be doing in the spring?
Well, we're, we're, we're still working on that. So we, we have to decide as a group and as a committee on how we wanna roll that out and for what grades and, you know, uh, what options that we, uh, are going to present to the parents. I, I think that we've looked, uh, very closely at what Hamilton Wenham does and the model that they have. And it looks like that's something that would work for our community. So it, it'll probably be something like that. Um, I, I don't wanna speak right now because I'm one person on this committee and we all have to decide how we're gonna do it, so.
Right, right. I mean, I was just thinking, you know, history is a particular type of subject, but I would think that use of the iPad would be very different in math or a science class.
Could be.
So.
But we're not, we're not, i- it's not about the content right now, it's about the device and, and how we can use that device and, and what are the, the roadblocks we're gonna run into and how is, even though it's a very small sample, how's the network gonna respond to it?
Yeah.
All kinds of things like that.
And how it poking them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, don't. I can hardly wait for that.
Probably have some in your office.
Yeah, I can see a, a, a new line in the handbook coming to you next spring.
I know.
So I do wanna thank everybody, you know, Mike Anderson and the custodial, maintenance custodial staff and Wes. Uh, and Paul Swain came in a little bit, did some work. And, uh, the school looks great and, uh, where it was a very peaceful summer there and we're, we're all ready to go and it's, it's more about polishing than building. And it's, it's more about polishing than building, like she was building and now it's, we're all polished up, we're ready to go.
Good. You certainly are, the building looks absolutely beautiful, you know, on our tour, very impressed.
Okay.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Good luck on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Have a good night. I did not, uh, make a motion to approve the crisis plan, so I'd like to do that.
Ooh.
Um, make a motion to approve the crisis plan as presented by Hope Doran and, uh, Guy Prescott.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Um, so we have a, uh, introduction to have occur at this point because I have not met, um, Colin.
Neither have I.
We made him wait long enough.
Cause you're gonna be next.
I'll, 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 I'll be a support system.
Thanks, your friend.
Absolutely, it's great to be here. Um, I've met, uh, a few people in the community already, it's good to see everybody again and nice to meet you both as well. Um, so just a quick introduction, kind of tell you where I'm coming from professionally. Uh, about three weeks ago, I moved from Chicago, uh, where I'd been for, uh, my professional career. Um, I'd started teaching, um, high school English, um, freshmen through seniors, uh, for a number of years in a few different schools in Chicago public schools. Uh, and then from there, I transitioned to a curriculum coordinator role, uh, for an international baccalaureate school, an IB school, um, in a, in a middle high school as well. So it was a sixth through twelfth grade, um, high school and, uh, or middle high school. And I coordinated the curriculum there, working on, um, unit plans with teachers, vertical alignment, making sure that, you know, we're backwards mapping our curriculum so we know that our seniors who are graduating have what they need to be successful in wherever it is that they were going. Um, from there, I, I then, uh, took a resident principal position at an elementary school, uh, so I could get some experience working with youngsters as well. So last year I was the resident principal, uh, of an elementary school in Chicago. Those are K to eight schools, or pre-K to eight schools. Um, and I worked closely with the primary grade levels, so our kindergarten, first and second grade teachers. Um, their weekly team meetings, again, looking at unit plans, uh, guided reading practices, small group instruction, um, and a lot of the things that, uh, that Margaret just talked about. Um, and, uh, then started looking for jobs back here in New England, uh, it's where my wife and I originally grew up. Uh, we have a two-year-old and another baby on the way, so we wanted to, uh, start raising our family, uh, in a similar area where, where we grew up. Um, and luckily found Georgetown and we're really happy to be here.
Oh, that's nice, that's great.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you. So I, I mean, in the, in the two weeks or so that I've been here, I've been keeping busy. Um, so, so far I've met with Dr. Deroche, um, who kind of gave me, has been really helpful in, um, kind of filling me in on, on the roles and responsibilities of this position and kind of what she had started. She, um, offered to continue to be a resource to me as I start to, um, do some things that I'm, I'm unfamiliar with but need to learn about, such as writing the, the Title One and the Title Two A grants. Um, and just some of the things that she got the ball rolling with, that I really am looking forward to continuing that work. Uh, specifically with, uh, the vertical team meetings that she started. Um, like I mentioned with my old school, um, that, that vertical articulation and make sure that we start with the end in mind and we know exactly what our seniors need to be successful, um, what they're able to produce, what they're able to master. Um, that needs to be known all the way down through the entire district so that we're, we have a clear plan so that our kindergarten, first and second grade teachers know in some way, shape, or form what they're preparing their students to be able to do in third, fourth, fifth, all the way up through twelfth grade. So those vertical team meetings, I feel are gonna be invaluable. Um, I'm also looking forward to working on the, the one-to-one iPad initiative to see kind of how, uh, I can support that in the curriculum development side and the instructional side. Um, I do have some experience with that from an old, from, um, my previous school where I was a curriculum coordinator. Um, worked on launching a similar initiative for our juniors and seniors, uh, which was kind of our pilot program before we launched for schoolwide. Um, yeah, the last two days I worked with Amanda Gerard, who's been great to, uh, do the new teacher orientation. Um, so she's been great to work with, I look forward to continuing to work with her and our, uh, new teachers, um, new hires, me being one of them, I guess. Um, but yeah, just really excited to, to get the ball rolling, to dive in. Um, I'm just trying to learn as much as I can at the moment, um, and, uh, get my feet wet in as many things as I, as I can and, and then really get to work.
Well, that's great, I'm glad to hear that Julie's, you know, helping along the way and, um, she's been great. But I, I really look forward to working with you too and I'm, you know, looking at your resume and everything, I definitely think it was, it was a good fit.
One thing that, um, you know, I, when I met Colin, we talked about is I think it's invaluable, the fact that he has K or pre-K to twelve knowledge and experience, because I don't think we've had that in our district, as far as I can remember.
We haven't.
So, that's very exciting.
Last year was a great experience for me getting to work with, uh, our youngsters, you know, our five, six, seven-year-olds. Uh, because as, when I was in the classroom, I, I didn't have that experience, um, so it was really great. As, as, from an administrator's standpoint, to, to really understand the developmental kind of span of, of all those, all of our students.
One of the things that we obviously are trying to get the information on the MCAS, cause those are gonna be coming out and we're gonna be looking at reports and, uh, that's, all that stuff is coming out in September and into October. So, you know, I asked Colin and Wes to meet with me and, you know, talk about, Wes got Colin right on the, right on the portal. You know, Colin had it all, a whole binder of things all, all, uh, tagged, you know, with the different kinds of reports. And so, you know, I, I think he's, he's really, he's got an amazing work ethic and I think he's, uh, he's a smart guy and he's gonna do great for us. And he and Jack have already started working together, he's met with the principals, you know, so. We, we, you know, this year what was really important is it always is, and you always notice, team. You know, there's, there's not many of us, so we do have to work together. And I'm really excited about the team that we've been able to build this summer. I, I really think everybody's gonna make a great contribution. So, it's been, it's been a great, you know, it's, it's always hard when people leave, you know, cause you miss them personally, you know, it's a personal loss. But there are wonderful, it just reminds me there are wonderful people, you know, who wanna do great work for kids everywhere. And it's just a matter of, you know, putting the, the pieces together and coming up with a team. So, I'm really looking forward to having them do some presentations for, for you this year on some of the things that we're doing. Cause I know that's something you said that you really like, so we'll put some things together.
Sure.
Yes. I'm really glad that Colin's here and that you got a chance to meet him.
I'm happy to be here.
Yeah, welcome, I'm very happy to meet you. And I'm sure we'll be getting to know each other much better because I recall, was it over the course of last year or the year before, we counted up the number of presentations to the school committee by Julie.
Julie did a lot, yeah.
It was eleven in a year, I don't wanna scare you.
I'm up for the challenge.
We actually have a time restriction on them?
Right, yeah. He'll go for twelve. They don't have to be lengthy, like, but, you know, but they, yeah. Cause I think someone was wondering, like, what do we as school committee members know about the Common Core curriculum? So I was looking back, it's like, actually, we've had quite a lot of opportunity to learn about this, so.
Great.
Yes. Well, we open our doors every day about teaching and learning, so.
To see you again.
That's a big piece of that job, so. Yeah, great. Did you have a question, Michael, or did you get to answer, ask it?
Go ahead.
Okay.
No.
I thought you had a question that you were getting ready to ask. So.
Technology, okay. We were very busy this summer. Yeah, first of all, I wanna thank Barry Blanger and Paul Swain, they came in and worked with me all summer long. Doing state reports, getting, getting, uh, labs reimage and, and reset. And they, they freed me up enough time to get this massive pile of work that I had to get done. Um, as Peter alluded to before, we had a, quite a mess with our servers, they were getting outdated. There were not the physical servers, but the actual software on them. So I had a company come in with an engineer and we redid the whole server situation, whole district server situation, where we now have all four servers on a new set, new, new version of VMware, which allows us to have a much faster access to the servers than we had before. Instead of using one network connection to, to each server, now we have three that are dynamic and they go back and forth, um, as they. So the whole flow of that server now is very dynamic and I've noticed at least a ten to fifteen percent increase in speed already. And that's just with what we, little bit we did. Um, it's now complete, that whole, that whole project is done. Um, we have this, we have the Windows server doing, doing certain things, we have the switches that are capable of doing more of the routing, they're doing more of that work, and we have the, uh, internet router just doing the internet. So I'm, I'm hoping that'll really eliminate a lot of the, the, the bandwidth choke points that we had before. So I'm hoping this is gonna increase the entire, uh, entire speed of the, of the server situation. We also reconfigured the entire network at the high school. Um, pretty much at Pembroke, everything was already set, so we didn't have to do any real work there. Barry did all the, um, re-imaging and fixing up of the, uh, equipment before he left and, and, and before the end of June. So that was all done, now he's just handing out, back out again, so that's, that's working very smoothly. Um, over at the high school, I pulled out all the access points, so now we have all new access points in every single classroom. I'm not totally done with the project yet, I still got some of the outline, um, connections to do. But all the classrooms now have a high-speed, uh, access point in every single room. So we're ready for whatever happens next year with iPads or whatever. We'll be able to do thirty to forty units per classroom without any trouble whatsoever. Um, the, the maintenance guys did an amazing job.
This is being recorded.
Yeah. It's ready, we, we spent a lot of time and effort putting on this. And the maintenance guys have been great, they've been running wires for me, they were really, very, uh, patient with me as I throw dust on their clean floors, when I put, uh, installed the access points up in the thing, they've been great about cleaning up after me. Um, we, we, we really did, uh, it was really, was a lot of work, but it's, 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 it's gonna be a great project once it's done. And it's very close to being done now. In both Pembroke and in the high school, we're going to give a, an open access point for them to use. So all cell phones and broaden, uh, guests can use, can use a guest.
This is a free.
Yeah. This, this is, this is gonna cost anything. And most modern, modern cell phones can use our wireless to sell, send out cellphone, uh, calls and text. So, they'll be, everybody who comes into the building, the, the guest is open, they can attach to it and they can do their cellphone calls instead of having to spend sixty thousand dollars on a repeater. Um, so that'll be done in both schools. And so, um, all that's gonna be a, a very big help to our, our situation. Um, Apple TVs, I tested them, we have Apple TVs at just about every single classroom. Um, that's working really well. Uh, Hope did an amazing job of getting Pembroke students all on a schedule this year so we can be more compliant with their state reporting. Um, and, uh, I'm working with Sandra on, uh, on the iPad pilot program. We're gonna be, we've already got, uh, apps, she's identified, we've got them ready to be purchased. I'll have them downloaded on the, on the iPads for, uh, for Tuesday.
Will we, uh, at some point during the year get a little presentation on that, how they're using it of the apps that they're using? That'd be great to see.
We will, we will do, definitely do that.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe we can have Sandra come in and we both, we'll do a presentation together.
She can take some, she, now she can use video, she can do a few things that can make it.
She started her blog, that's really great, she's really willing to do that. And that's, I don't have the exact URL for that yet, but, uh, she did send it to me and she's got it all started. Right now it just has an introduction on it, but she's gonna be adding things to that as she learns, uh, what works and what doesn't. So she's gonna be a fantastic resource. So we're really excited about her taking on that role, role. And the old Arrow Hives that we have in the high school, we're gonna reuse those in Pearlie. So Pearlie will have a better, better internet connection for the wireless in there, once we get that moved over. But that'll be a fall project.
Are we, and I'm sure we are, are we supplying wireless to the senior center ultimately? Is that?
I don't, that, I don't think that's part of our plan. I didn't have, I didn't have internet at all.
Good question, yeah.
We don't, we don't really, at Pearlie, we don't have the internet connection capable of handling more, it was barely able to handle what it does now.
Right.
So I'm hoping they're gonna get their own.
They didn't ask for that, but that would be something that maybe down the road.
If they wanna join with us and we can see if we can get a, 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 a fiber connection in there and they wanna help pay for it. Hey, I have no problem.
But that might be something that capital, CIP might be able to do, some, help us with something like that.
Yeah, I am working with a company, uh, it's a superhighway, they're gonna try and get us more bandwidth and, and, and better pricing, they've been working. They just joined with the state of Massachusetts, I, earlier back in May, I got in touch with them, they've been working, um, to try and find what we can do. Cause right now we're at both schools at a hundred fifty megabyte connection, which is fairly decent. But I can guarantee you in a year or so, that's gonna be poor. Cause just more and more things get, get through, so thrown through that pipe. So, we will be working on getting more bandwidth or less price.
To go off the topic a little bit, is the senior center on board for when to?
Uh, they're anticipating around the holidays.
Okay.
Sometime November, December.
So when are they coming in, just like, wittiers coming in, when?
Uh, they're, well, they're, right up, they're supposed to be coming in in September. The electricians have come and run all of the wires, the, the, the walls are framed. Um, they're, the next thing is to, to, um, basically blow out the, the wall to where the door is gonna be and create, construct the door that will lead into the senior center, into the office space and then out to the hallway. Um, and then it's just putting the drywall in and, you know, the, they're, they're putting the drop ceiling in already. They have to turn the lights a bit. Mike's done, Mike's got all the rooms, well, the rooms that we have saved Colleen's furniture in is kind of a pretty full room.
So it's just like all stuck?
The custodians painted all the walls, did all, shined all the floors, cleaned everything up. So of course they'll need a little cleaning once, but yeah, it's.
So we're thinking January of twenty seventeen?
No, they're thinking November, December.
Okay, okay.
Just before the holidays.
Things.
January twenty.
Yeah, they were hoping to maybe be in there for their holiday party. They were hoping to be there for their holiday party.
Okay. Oh, that's nice. So it's a year in, from when we first, cause it was supposed to be?
That's great. Yeah.
Okay, nice.
Do, from a, um, access point and all that perspective, um, do we have a financial plan in terms of, obviously all that stuff is gonna wear out and die? Um, expectations of, you know, year three, cause we're replacing it all at the same time?
Yes.
Which is not sort of the phased in, every year we're replacing it third kind of thing?
But what's nice is that, yeah, as those things get old and have to replace, we'll get a new, fresh set of E-rate money to, you'll use that, so we'll be able to get discounts for that, that change. Pembroke will be, it'll be a year shift between Pembroke and the high school, so it'll be a little, little leeway there.
Okay.
But I anticipate four or five years before we need to replace it. By that time, we'll have a whole fresh set of, uh, E-rate discounts that we can use for that. So we'll have some help, but we'll have to have some capital budget for doing it for sure.
But would you, would you phase, would you phase it, Wes, do you think, as, as, what you're asking, Michael?
I don't know if we could, we, we, I didn't.
They're all aging at the same time.
Yeah, we get enough, we get enough discount with, with, with E-rate that we could probably replace the whole thing at, at once and do it that way.
Very round numbers, what was, what's that cost?
Round numbers, we get forty percent discount, um, the whole, we get a really good discount just be, being in the E-rate program for the AP. So, um, we're probably talking twenty, forty, probably about thirty, forty thousand dollars replaced the high school. About the same for the, we actually have the same amount of APs between, on the, in high school, Pembroke's seventy-three. Um, so, you, you, we get, instead of nine hundred dollars, it costs us four hundred and thirty-one because that's a pre-discount before the forty percent discount.
Yeah, okay.
So it's, it's really not too bad, but we will need to.
It's, thirty-four is a pretty good hit.
Yeah, it's a good hit for, it's gonna be like, so it'll be offset a year, so one year we'll have to replace Pembroke, so next year we'll have to replace the high school.
So we might just wanna think about, you know, having like we do with the leases, just keep, you know, just get the money in the budget and just know that there's different things you're gonna charge to it every year. Cause once we get in the budget, it seems to be able to be there, it's getting it in the budget.
Yeah, getting it first, yeah.
That's the tricky part.
We have two, we have probably three years for Pembroke, as we talked about, and, well, say, the four years for the high school. So, yeah, but it, about the four or five years of getting out of an AP.
Right.
We do need to look at data storage though, I mean, that's something that we, we are gonna need to talk about. But what, what we'll do is we'll be updating the strategic plan like in October. And so those are the kinds of things that would go on the technology goals.
Yeah. And there were no hardware issues on the server? I remember it was a, is it a software, is it a hardware?
The hardware was fine, it really isn't that old, it's only, it's, it's, it's on, it's going on its fifth year now. And out of, out of a seven to ten-year server, so we're, we're in pretty good shape there. It's storage, amount of storage arrangement, they add some more hard drives onto it, but.
And once we start with a one-to-one, I mean, obviously it depends on what our storage, if we do a Dropbox model or whatever, but.
Seventy-five percent of our storage is email.
Right.
The rest of it is all used.
Are we planning student email?
Student email will all be handled through our Google domain, that'll, that'll cost us nothing in hardware.
Okay.
Uh, and I'm trying to move, I'm trying to move staff over that direction now, we push a lot of staff towards that to get them off that. It gives us a little more life out of the exchange server. So, that's in the plan.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good.
Thank you both.
Thank you both.
Poor Jack, he didn't get to share anything tonight. He was on the hot seat laughing.
How are things going though, are things going good for you?
Things are going well, you know, the hiring obviously has been the biggest thing, but, uh, I think we've gotten a lot done. We're, we're gonna be ready for open day, that's the most important thing.
That's good, I've heard some great things from teachers that I've, uh, that I know, that have met you in the past week and. They, yeah, they were very happy to meet you and thought very good things, so I was.
Both the ones that had bad things this season.
No, it wasn't something that I asked them, they offered it, so I thought.
Oh, great. Oh, great.
That was, that was nice. Unsolicited. It was very nice.
A, a very minor random point, but you are still Julie and you are still Donna on the website.
Yeah.
Oh.
I don't know why I was on there today, but I, I noticed that, so.
So we have to change that.
Unless you'd like to stay, Julie and Donna.
So Wes, could you?
I'd just my daughter, so.
I don't know. Those two are gonna be troubled together, I think.
Might have to separate you. Okay, that's good. All right, so now we have, um, the budget talk. FY sixteen, but unfortunately Joan isn't here, but she sent us a nice.
I know. She did.
Thank you.
She told us about it.
Playing everything.
Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Um.
Yeah, she said she, she just heard, she's having bad headaches.
Yep.
Here it is. I told her it's tension.
Right. Okay, so. It's. It's funny seeing everything zero and a hundred percent.
I know.
This is really, wow. Interesting report. I mean, this is something that I will be referring back to, you know, in the year, in the year to come because we can look at the variances. We can really, really see the difference between actual and budgets, you know, line by line. And, uh.
I did send her an, an email just, um, and I just checked to see if she was wondering, but she didn't. I just wanted to know where that twenty thousand came from.
The extra.
Yeah, the one that she had to cover. Um.
Oh.
It was, yeah.
We had addition at the end of the year, only about twenty thousand. Is that what you're looking?
Yeah. We did have to charge the district budget for athletic expenses as well as food services.
Oh, so you wanna know what specifically was the twenty thousand?
Yeah, I was just wondering.
All right.
Well, cause that was all, we, we had discussed that. If I read the email correctly, that wasn't new. That was.
That was expenses we already had.
Right, that was, that was already stuff that we've. Covering the athletic budget, covering, some of that was the arrears.
Of the food service?
Of the food services and the athletic, from the food services, athletics, and pre-K, if I read the email correctly.
Okay.
Um, was, that number didn't seem new to me. It seemed like what we talked about previously from the adjustments that had to be made.
Okay.
Her original, her original prediction was much more significant to the.
Yeah, well, that, I think that's why the twenty didn't really bell to me. Cause I think originally it was forty-six.
Yeah, I think when, when, when all the bills were paid, there were some things that were maybe encumbered that didn't cost quite as much. But the twenty thousand was what the budget would have been in deficit. And so we had to use circuit breaker as a safety net for that. But I can ask her if there was some, if there was s- any specific expenditures that, that twenty, that resulted in that twenty thousand.
But we, yeah, yeah.
And it may be, as Michael's saying, it may just be general over, you know, just all paying all the bills and it's just, that's what, that's what wasn't. Yeah, what's tricked out to, but I'll ask her.
Well, it was good news, so I was happy with that. But, and then, so we only, so out of the ten openings for School of Choice that we opened, we have eight?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Eight. And actually, we got another, um, well, it's not a new request. Uh, it was someone who was on the waitlist. And then when we realized we had openings, Laura did call all the people. And this mom that talked to me today said, I got confused cause I got a waitlist thing and she didn't call us right back. So she called today to say, can my daughter come?
Okay.
So I called up the list and it did look like there was a tenth grade spot. So this is, that, so I asked, um, Joanne Sherman, who was covering today, to give the mom a call and just verify if she's, if she's interested in having her daughter come, because she originally applied. And she was on the list of people we, we, we just didn't have enough spots apparently. So she was waitlisted.
Right.
Cause it's unusual to have a tenth grade spot, is that correct? I know you have more ninth grades.
Yeah, we had, we had, we, we had more tenth graders than I thought we were gonna get. I really did. And so, so it, I don't know whether she's coming or not. Her mom was going to, uh, register her at the high school if she was, and then we would accept her. So it may be nine. But I asked Joan to build this budget, her revolving account, with eight, cause I know there are eight.
What was, what did we put in the budget that we needed?
We wanted ten.
We budgeted, yeah.
We wanted ten. But as Joan, as Joan would say if she was here, is, you know, as we looked at this year's budget and as we've hired people, the, the ways the salaries have worked, you know, there's, there's a little bit of money there that we're saving, so that's what's making it not like so hard if we didn't get the full ten. Do you know what I mean? Because that, it's built in there. So right now, I'm, I'm, I'm basing it on eight, but it could be nine.
Okay. Um, so again, no surprise, athletics and food services.
No.
Um, you know, are, are worries, as she referred to them, and I, I, that wasn't a surprise. But as she mentioned, hopefully with the new charging policy, we will see something change.
And she did reduce expenses. She did.
I'd still be interested to hear what the new finance person.
Just her experience.
The experience, as, as you had asked, and she said, never. I'd love to know.
What they do.
What it is that they did and is it apples to apples, you know?
Yeah, right.
And what type of demographics was it, you know?
Well, we can definitely talk to Suzanne about that when she comes, for sure.
Yeah.
Which.
Maybe it was more of a hard line there or something. I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah, it is. We, we definitely will wanna talk.
Yeah.
About that.
So, and then I just had a question. I had spoken with Carol earlier and I thought I'd bring it up again. I was just wondering, so as we build the budget going forward, I know it's a very complex process and we'll be starting it very soon. How do we treat the variances that we're looking at right now? How does, how do they play into building the new budget going forward?
Well, there are certainly certain lines. So what we do when we see this variance and we look at how we spent the money, what we'll do is we'll look at, well, what are those lines that are sort of always volatile? So for example, things like long-term subs, right? Or sometimes legal can be a little bit tricky. So what we do is we look at the three-year average. So we, we have the ability in our programs, our MUNIS program, to go back and say, well, what did we, what did we budget and actually spend, you know, this year, then this year, then this year. And then if we, if we know, like in legal, for example, that we have a teacher negotiations year coming up and we're gonna actually need the nego, we need the attorney to be part of it, we'll budget more. But generally, we look at, you know, where are we? Are we close? Long-term subs, we're never close. We're never close. We, we.
That's my favorite.
Cause we can't, cause we can't predict how many people are going to have a baby or, or people who are gonna have a medical issue or whatever. So, um, we do look at every line, but some lines in particular, you know.
With the larger variances and with the ones that, like, one year a variance will be one thing and the next year it'll be completely different.
Right, right. Like, for example, legal, special ed legal, some years is, is really tough to manage. This year, you know, she didn't spend all of her money, right? So it just so happened that it was that kinda year. I never usually spend all the legal money and the school committee doesn't usually spend all the legal money, um, for, for our attorney. But, you know, you also wanna make sure you have it there in the event that, you know, cause that, again, if you look and say, well, what did we spend on average over the last three years? And then we try. But, you know, the pie is the pie, right? So if we're building a budget with a three percent increase.
But you just wanna be thoughtful and look at the numbers and say, why was it this way? And, you know.
That's right. We build our budget first with our people, you know, what we know it's gonna cost us. And then we take a look at every line. And yes, we do.
Right.
Look, every year there are perennial, right. Every year there are perennial. You see them every year. And long-term subs is one that is almost always. Was there any line in particular, Pam, that you, that you noticed that you were wondering about? You just, it's just a general question, like if you see the negatives, what, yeah.
It's just a general question because it seems like a really interesting report. Can I see any, I mean, total computer support?
Right, so, so we would look at something like that.
We spent eighty-nine thousand dollars less than.
Right. So that probably wa- was a, a, that could, that could have been related to a salary, you know, or less hours than they were.
Right, right.
You know. But we.
And, and, well, here, if you look closer, I guess it's a computer lease.
Yes.
Issue.
Right.
So we, we got favorable and that, okay.
But, but I think your point is well made, that you wanna always look at the lines to see if there's a story behind the line. It could just be an anomaly in one particular year and it also could be, okay, now we've done this for the last three years, we've underbudgeted it, okay? So maybe, at some point, maybe we need to, you know, add more money to it and just say, okay, something else isn't gonna get.
Right. I mean, you don't need to spend too much time on lines that never change or that you always get.
No, no.
Right.
Or, or tiny little, tiny little differences.
Tiny little variances, right, right.
It's the bigger.
Right.
And I, I certainly can take any questions that I can't answer that I can get to Joan and get back to her after the email.
Does anybody have any questions specifically?
I've emailed Joan earlier. I'm sure she'll.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah. Um, so we do have line item transfers that we need to, uh, vote on. So I will make a motion to move line item transfers one through forty-four in the amount of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and one dollars.
So.
Second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, that's another twenty thousand there.
Forty-dumper. Okay. Um, as far as subcommittee reports, governance, budget and finance, yeah, nothing. Um, governance.
We met.
On Monday?
Oh, do we have?
We have policies in here.
Okay.
And, and the policies.
Yep.
Are all listed down below.
We can all just talk about it later. Under the policies section.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, because that's everything we, we met on.
We're not on there yet.
Any negotiations? Has anybody else met?
No.
No, okay. I do just wanna say, as far as the later start time, um, Dr. Judith Owens, who is the, um, individual that we saw when we had our forum that we had.
On video?
On the video. And she is, um, she is, um, coming to Masco to attend their forum. Their first parent forum on September twenty-seventh. And Masco has, um, graciously extended the invitation to any Georgetown, um, parent that would like to go and, um, see Dr. Dr. Owens in person and then ask any questions that they may have. So I think that would be definitely a worthwhile.
Carol, is that something you can put on your blog?
I will put it on the blog. I told Barbie I'd post it, so.
And I'll put it on, uh, put it on Facebook.
We'll put it on Facebook page.
Yeah. And that's something maybe the committee should go to as well.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be really.
Is there a time? Is it, is it at evening, right?
I think it's seven, it's seven o'clock.
And it's at Masco?
At the Masco auditorium. And I'll just confirm that with, um, with Hagan over at Masco.
The high school auditorium?
Yeah.
Well, that's pretty impressive that they got her to come.
That's great. Yep, they got her to come. Yeah, she's a very busy, uh, person, but she is very, um, passionate about the subject and she really takes a lot of time to attend these different forums around. So I, I think it would be great if.
Yeah, we'll definitely publicize that, for sure.
Yeah. Good.
And so Masco is just starting the process?
They are.
Okay.
So we're a little bit ahead. So they're a little behind us.
Yeah.
First, first forum, um, and they did already do a survey. So.
It'd be interesting to see what their survey said.
Yeah, they'll be, um, more than happy to meet with us at any time, talk, you know, talk about it. I have been in touch with the Hamilton, um, when I'm school committee chair, and at this point in time, they are not, they are not looking into, um, doing anything about it. So that's, that's.
And we are gonna meet that little group I told you, the superintendent's group that I work with. We are gonna meet in North Reading. They're just trying to schedule a meeting like in late September when the school year starts. I'll keep you posted on that as well.
Good. Okay, so, um, when is the next school building meeting? Uh, it would be the next, the second Tuesday of the month. Oh, okay, that's when I keep it, okay. So, okay. Um, so under new business, you did have quite a bunch of policies to.
We did.
We did. Have us take a look at.
So on the, the, the first couple.
Now, why did you pick, what made you look at these ones? Because of the?
Well, the, the first two, the student policies, goals, and co-curricular and extracurricular activities ones are really Joan, they're from the CPR, the civil rights.
Civil rights. Okay.
So it's just adding homelessness.
Oh, right.
Right.
Yep.
So those were, those were, I'm gonna say easy ones.
Mm-hmm. Yep. It's good.
I cannot speak to, this was my first meeting on governance, so I can't speak to why these things were chosen. They were just on the agenda.
I think it's because these were things that needed to be, um, yes, yeah. They were, you know, they were things that were carried over.
Updated.
And so Joan just wanted to have them all updated and they were updated also from Mas, so it had to be updated.
Okay.
Mas makes recommendations about.
Yes. It was required to be updated from them, so.
Oh, right. Yeah.
Yes.
So for J I C H, alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students prohibited, which is very strangely worded.
Yes, I agree.
Um, the old one was just alcohol used by students. This one added tobacco. It actually is much more specific.
Vaping, drugs.
Alcohol, tobacco, including vapor, any cigarettes, marijuana, steroids, any controlled substances. So it's a much broader selection of, of.
And it wasn't just being proactive, you know, about teaching about it was now if you already engaged in it, this is how we're going to teach, you know.
Okay.
Work with you on that. So the, the wording was a little bit different as well.
For, um, and I don't know why I started talking, but I did, so feel free to.
Well, keep going. You're doing a great job.
I'm gonna jump to the public complaints about school personnel.
Okay.
Um, we were recommending that we don't change it. So I guess in the spring, um, Naomi Stomberg brought up that we should review the policy um, on whether or not the public, whether or not the school committee was sort of the, the last round of, of, um.
Complaint?
If complaints can be brought to the school committee for personnel issues.
Right, we can, we can.
Yeah, we talked about this because we've had some.
Correct.
We can listen to them. However, we don't have the authority to act upon certain ones.
Where we don't have statutory, um, authority over the personnel, we can't really, we can listen, we can, we can learn, but we can't actually do it.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, so when we reviewed the policy, the last one, um, number seven on the policy very specifically states, should dissis, should dissatisfaction remain after the above steps have been taken, the matter will be placed on the agenda, um, for the next regularly scheduled school committee meeting, provided that the school committee has statutory oversight for the employee.
Okay.
Which is what Naomi was getting at.
Yes.
Correct. So it's already in the policy, so we didn't really see a need to change it.
Right.
Um.
So it's already in it.
So it's already.
It's, it's already there, so we're just reviewing it, looking at the language.
That we were reading it, we went, what?
Yeah. It actually does what we wanted to do.
It's all right there.
So we don't need to vote on that.
Right.
Um, and then the teaching about alcohol, tobacco, and drugs, I guess this is one that we had a bit of a discussion. Um, the old policy, let me make sure that I have, was much more, I would say, focused on the illegal nature of the use of drugs, alcohol, and tobacco. Um, whereas the new policy proposed by MASC is much more. It seemed to much more acknowledge that, that students are using the various things and how can we make it better?
This is what I was talking about, the proactive versus the reactive, you know?
Right.
So this is more now of, of the reactive, we know it's there.
Hmm.
And we were also, yeah, and how we're gonna deal with it. We were also talking about some of the language, like it doesn't say illegal in the newer one. We'd like to put in, you know, it is illegal.
Well, right. At this point. Putting the focus on, on teaching, right, healthy decision-making and, um.
Yes.
Correct.
Right, right.
And we talked about.
And peer resistance and.
Possibly the SRO person might be talking about this to students or, you know, somehow putting it in within the curriculum. And what department would talk about it.
And, and there's a lot of great goals in here for the education, you know, to teach students self-management skills, social skills, negotiation skills, and refusal skills.
Right.
That will help them to make healthy decisions and avoid alcohol, tobacco, and drug use. Yeah, I think this is great. Illegal drug use.
Right.
You know, yes, illegal drug use.
You got in there, right?
So we don't have a revised one of this to actually.
So is this a new one, Michael?
Correct.
It says March, oh, this is Mas. So are you saying that, you know, you say that you.
I don't, I don't think.
I thought, I thought there was an existing policy.
Well, they're right. We wanted to just add it, we merged them. We wanted to add a.
It was a modification.
But this is, this is not a, like a revised version. This is what, this is what NAIC proposed. This is what, this is what NAIC proposed, it doesn't include what we had talked about, we don't have a version of what we had talked about.
No, what you're holding up doesn't look like what I'm looking at.
But it's the same policy, right?
Teaching about alcohol and drugs.
It's the same policy.
So, that, so.
I H A N A to I H A N B, is that the same policy, or is that a?
We should have I H, I H A M A and I H A N B.
May I just peek at them, so I can just see what you're talking about?
Yeah, cause I only have this one.
Oh, so I. So, you don't have this one?
Well, I, that's bizarre.
That's a different one.
Oh, sorry.
Because if it was the same, I H A M A, then it's the same title, which is what's odd for me, right? So, it says, teaching about alcohol, tobacco, and drugs, and the new one says, teaching about drugs, alcohol, and tobacco.
Different order.
But I don't really see those as being different.
Right. Look what I have, teaching about alcohol, tobacco, and drugs, I H A N B.
Yes, so that's what Michael's alerting us to, and I don't know, you know what, Michael, to tell you that, I don't, I don't know, I don't think they're two different policies, that's what I think is bizarre.
So, I think we need to.
So, would you wanna have it be go through the three readings?
Oh.
That's what I'm, otherwise, if it's the same policy, you're, you can make the changes to it with the committee's approval, and then we're just moving forward.
I guess either way, we don't have a new policy written with the changes that we wanted, so I don't think we're ready to.
Oh, I, I did it for you.
There are.
I did, this is, this is all the changes you wanted me to make.
We did put it in.
Oh, I was looking at my.
See, it's right here.
Your illegal is in there.
We did add this word, and we added.
You wanted the last bullet.
This is the one I have, PM, the one you do have.
I stand very much for it.
Okay.
So, this is, this is the, this is the correct.
This is the one you want to approve, so it's just a modification to the policy you already have, so you can vote on it.
Okay.
So, this just doesn't have the town emblem on it?
Yeah, we'll, we'll put it up, this was.
Okay.
Lorraine couldn't actually find it in Laurel's files, Laurel's filing system, I found it after the fact, she retyped the whole thing. So, so it'll be fine, I'll, we'll cut and paste it when Laura comes back, and it'll all be in the format, but it's the concepts of your context of what your, concept you're approving.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve policy J A E, student and policies goals. Policy J J E, co-curricular and extracurricular activities. Policy J I C H, alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students prohibited. And policy I H A N B, teaching about alcohol, tobacco, and drugs, as presented by the governance.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You guys have been busy. And did you set like a set meeting, like every?
We haven't, yeah.
Yeah.
We had it set last year, so we'll have to come up with a time.
Do a doodle.
We like doodles.
Do the doodle.
I miss that, when Laura's not there, she's gonna do the doodles.
Yep. Okay, I don't have anything else on the agenda, there isn't a reason to have an executive session this evening. I wish everybody a great first day of school, I think it's gonna go well. The schools look great, so I hope everyone's prepared, I hope the kids aren't too upset that they're starting before Labor Day. I have heard a few complaints, so I apologize for that.
I'd have heard them after Labor Day, too.
Exactly, I keep telling them that, you'll be out in June, earlier in June. So, at this point in time, I will make a motion to end this meeting at nine forty-nine PM.
So moved.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Barbie.